If you'll give us just a few extra minutes, we ran out of agendas for some reason. I'm going to have to print some more and we want to get those distributed and available. We'll begin the meeting. We're seven foot five or so, five, seven inches behind. So bear with us, we appreciate the patience. The ones here are, they're now on the podium. If you would like one, come and grab one. Give everybody about 90 seconds to come get them distributed if they desire perhaps. The event, the item that everyone's here for is basically first in our corporate business. Okay, I think we're finally ready to get started. We've got the extra agendas out in the crowd and gave you extra minutes for some people who wish to be here this evening to make their way in the door. Thank you all for coming. This may be a record crowd. And once, I might, don't tell them I said this, but I'm glad that the fire chief couldn't be here tonight, so they might be tired. But we will get started. It is Monday, March 5th, 2018. We're a little behind in the time, 7:06 PM, and we will convene this meeting and call it to order with a roll call. Please, clerk.
Councilor Long here, Councilor Combs.
Here.
Councilor Hires.
Here.
Councilor Bliss.
For us.
We have a question.
Next, we have our invocation that will be given by Pastor Matthew Prince from First United Methodist Church. Pastor Prince.
Pray for me. Hello, you gracious God, we gather here together and we ask that you just bless us and keep us. And Lord, as we go about the business of this meeting, we just pray by your presence to be with us and to do the things that we need to do right for our city. And so, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. And, Lord, we give you thanks for the outcry of people that have come to care about their city. And so, Lord, we pray that as we have conversation, may they be peaceful and may we be mindful of your love and care for us. And so, Lord, just bless us and keep us as we gather here in this place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Now please join me with applause. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No doubt there are, here, some people that are waiting. I apologize for making everybody get down and right back to God. We'll move on to item number two, which is our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time and the cumulative total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talquaw citizens and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by a speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time about an item not on the agenda? Architecture makes me have to lean to see if there's anyone behind the poles. It appears not. And so, we will now move to item number three. This is our consent agenda. These items are proposed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council by unanimous consent can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with the approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session. Counselors, you've got the list of items before you that we consider to be routine and we would entertain a motion to approve that agenda at this time.
Mayor, I would like to request that we remove the minutes at February 5th and February 20th from the consent agenda.
At Councilor Long's request, we will remove the approval of the minutes. Is there a desire to remove any other items from the agenda? Hearing none, we will have those items removed and entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. A motion and a second from Councilor Combs and Councilor Hires. Clerk, would you use the roll call, Bliss?
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next is item number four, our announcements, presentations, and reports. And first, we want to recognize two employees for lengthy tenure here at the City of Talquaw. In December, Dicky Nugent from the Cemetery Department and Larry Dallas from Solid Waste had been here 25 and 20 years respectively. So that's quite a amount of, a bit of longevity, probably some of our long-serving employees at this point. Are they with us this evening? And are they brave enough to raise their hand and admit it? I don't see any hands going up, but if you know Mr. Nugent or Mr. Dallas, tell them thank you for their service to this community. And we will remove, or excuse me, move on to the report from the library. Is there a representative from the library to give us a report this evening? Normally, I can pick them out of the crowd. This crowd is a little larger. I do not see anyone. How about from the Convention, Visitor Bureau or the Chamber of Commerce? Actually, I do know, I want to make one exception. How about the CDB? Are you going to do both? Well, then I'll go ahead and point out Cindy Morris, if you will come to the podium and introduce yourself. This is the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, joining us out of, is it Texas? Is that where you originally helped out?
I am a true O.P.
Bartlesville.
I am.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing me some time at the podium. What I did not know is that we do a report every time. So as many of you know, that my last two weeks have been pretty busy just getting settled in here in Talquaw and engaging myself into the community and meeting many people. So, Mr. Carr, thank you for meeting with me last week and kind of giving me an update on the city and what we have going on currently in the community. And thank you to each council member who has reached out and helped me understand a little bit more about Talquaw. I will tell you that we have a lot of things going on with the chamber and the CDB. I will share with each of you that we did lose our tourism director the day I started. Just she had some family issues and so we will be, we have appointed a current staff person. People service in the interim and we will be in that process at a later date to find a new tourism person to do our marketing and promotion of Talquaw. Also, for those who are not aware or if you have forgotten, the state of the community will be on Thursday at 11:30 in S.U. Ballroom and we hope that you will join us. If you have not already made plans to join us, right now, we have a record crowd. We just, I think we hit 205 a few minutes ago after my reception and so we're real excited about that program continuing to grow. So I will see you at the next council meeting and thank you for allowing me time.
Thank you. It's nice to, I guess, meet you. We've not spoken yet.
No, we have not.
We will. Thank you. Talquaw Main Street Association, is Mr. Haley with us this evening? Does he like to give a report? Or someone from the, from TMSA? Seeing no one here, we'll now move to the reports from the city departments. The street department has provided a written report. Mr. Commissioner, would you like to expound upon that report or is that sufficient?
Ah, the report pretty much covers all of it.
Sir? Any of the department heads? Chief King? Nothing tonight?
No, sir, we have a weekly report to the council.
Okay. I don't see any of the department heads there that would have a report. So we will now move into our regular session. Item number five is the first item in that regular session. It's discussion of possible actions on items removed from the consent agenda. We did have the consideration for approval of the February 5th and 20th meeting minutes removed. Councilor Long, tell us what you've got on your mind.
On February 5th, page one, section two, public comments. Ms. Buffy, Beth respoke, but we did not reflect her address when she came to the podium and shared that. And then on page five of the council packet, which would be page two, I'm sorry, the minutes at February 20th, page four, item number 10, just a typo. We duplicated the account number 1106693612. There's actually a correct typographical error, just two minor, very minor details.
Clerk, if you've made a note of those, and counselors, if you are satisfied with those amendments to those minutes, we would entertain a motion to approve them with those changes. And so, take the motion from Councilor Bliss and second from Councilor Combs. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Bliss?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a quick note. Let's flip the pages. Now we can move on to item number six, which is discussion and possible action regarding the use of city-owned properties adjacent to and near Dietrich Lane as the site of a recreational trail system. Councilor Long?
Yes, yes. Myself along with the other counselors here, of course, you have received, I don't even know, probably at least 50 emails roughly, plus some numerous phone calls, a lot of emails from people who live in the community, plus some people from out of city, other parts of Oklahoma. And I think Councilor Bliss even told me he got a call from someone from Hawaii who also wanted to express support for this. But also on that same token, we also got some emails of folks who were also concerned. So we basically, we've got people on both sides of the aisle who both wanted the opportunity to come together and share their opinions and why they're support of or why they're against this. And I think Mayor and Councilor Combs also have some information that they may or may not want to share tonight. But I thought this would be a good opportunity for both sides to get to come up and speak and share. So.
Absolutely.
Do you want to put a coin on which side goes first or?
I'll tell you what, I know that we had been approached by, by an attorney. Is that proper for them to be represented this evening? Is there, or do we need to just call for members of the general public?
He can come up first if he wants, but just call for them.
So just call whoever wants to speak and they can, I guess, flip that coin, draw straws, and we've got Chief of Police over here. Whoever wants to speak up first, positive or negative, a report.
I'll go ahead and start. I have a PowerPoint presentation that is going to be, I'm sure, very disappointing to everyone. But I've made some copies of it in case I didn't have the computer working and I may still not have the computer working. And I took up a lot of toner on my printer, so I figured I'd go ahead and hand these out as well. I'd like to start by thanking everyone for showing up for my piano recital. Kind of surprised to see so many people here for it and also surprised not to see a piano. So since I don't have a piano, I guess I'll have to say something else. My name's Brian Duke. I represent the Lardishet Safety and Preservation Association. It is an association of, right now, 20 members who own property northeast of Talquaw, which surrounds a certain tract of property that has been the topic of discussion in recent weeks and months. This organization formed in response to a lot of activity on social media and in the news and just general conversation around town. And we appreciate Councilor Long putting us on the agenda so we can have a chance to discuss what our concerns are. I am a licensed professional attorney as opposed to the many amateur kind that we find on Facebook offering their opinions, legal opinions, on who can do what. We're here today because in 1939, Arch and Mary Faulner, Fultcher, excuse me, deeded a small 65-acre tract of land near Talquaw to the city. It is 65 acres and not 75. We have seen a lot of excitement. There have been ideas proposed about 80 years later, using some of this property to build some biking trails and hiking trails. And know these people are very excited about what they feel like is a very good thing for Talquaw. And we don't blame people for promoting their business and for promoting their sport and wanting Talquaw to take part in that. But in that excitement and in that zeal of promotion, there has been some misinformation distributed to the public, not the least of which is the purpose of our being, trying to be on this agenda tonight. The word is out that we came here to stop any trails and keep people from doing things they want to do. We merely wanted to let people know who we are and where we are and what our concerns about these trails are. This is our backyard. We live there. We know all about this property. We know a lot more about it than anybody else. And in the conversation, we have felt like we've been left out. The talk and on the social media, the conversations going on, were all about how easy this is going to be, that there's some property that the city has that we can use. It's not going to cost the city anything. And some other things about what our objections to the project are. So we want to be able to clear up, and we asked for this opportunity to clear up some of that misinformation. The first two items I think we'd like to clear up is that this project is going to benefit everyone in Talquaw. That there are going to be trails that the whole family can go out and ride and hike and take the kids, mom, dad, and the kids. And we know this terrain and we know the area. And I think the people that are in favor of this or are promoting the idea will tell you themselves. This will not be a family area. This will be a very rough mountain biking terrain that will be suitable only for people with mountain bikes and who have the physical ability and the skill to use them. The terrain there is very steep and there's also a question of access to get there. The general conventional wisdom is that there is a section line easement that will be no problem and will lead right to the property. That simply isn't the case. The section line is not suitable for any kind of easement or any kind of ingress or egress to get to this property. So to develop this project is going to take a separate road. It's going to take a forced easement on property owners around the, around this particular section. The terrain is only suitable for a certain kind of trail. In mountain biking, they have the same kind of rating system as, as some people are familiar with, with skiing. You go skiing, family goes, you've got some green slopes for everybody, you've got some blue ones that are a little more difficult, and then you have some black diamonds. And in mountain biking, you have double black diamonds. If these trails can be built and if access can be gotten to this property, the trails there are going to be difficult. They're going to be black diamond and double black diamond trails. They're not going to be the kind that are paved. I know that Mayor Nichols and Mr. Combs went to Bentonville earlier this week and saw what $59 million worth of Walton money came in to build a lot of trails that are friendly for everybody in the family. They spent tens of millions of dollars paving trails that everybody could use. These trails are not going to be suitable and I just want people to know what they're getting. We feel like it's not going to be the word and the promotion has been that this is going to cost nothing and that everyone can go out there and ride their bikes. Fact is, it's going to cost a lot. I know you've probably heard from time to time, hey, this project isn't going to cost you anything. And you probably know better than I do that projects always cost something. This one's going to cost significant amount of money and time. And we know this because we live there. This whole area is heavily wooded, mountainous area. I'd like to go ahead and see if I can get the microphone working. There's the culprit that brought us here right there. This is a deed from Fultcher's to the city that deeded this particular property. This was in 1939, the same year that Dawn with the Wind and the Wizard of Oz came out. Also the same year that the Nazis invaded Poland and started World War II. When this deed was granted and filed, some of our association members were living near this property. They were alive at the time, they were growing up, but this was city property. It's kind of hard to see, but this is an aerial view that includes the property that's owned by our association and the proposed area to use for biking trails. It's hard to see here. But this is Dietrich Lane coming this way and this is actually on the section line. And Dietrich turns this way and goes that way. There's a reason why Dietrich Lane turns. The lane, the section line going this way is impassable. It is made up of ravines, deep gullies, very hilly, mountainous terrain. So that's why that road turns this way. This map, I drew exactly to scale down on the meter. You can check that if you want. It's a very crude and poor drawing, but it's about where this section is. There's a little kind of a puzzle piece at the bottom. And if that section line could get there, it would go from here to there. This is a fire break easement for utility. That's the, that fire break is the avenue that trespassers are most likely to use to get to all the properties in the area. This is the map that I think some people have been circulating and it shows this area owned by the City of Talquaw. The maps I've seen also show this. This little square up here is actually owned by the county. It was acquired by a tax resale deed. I want to say it was in the 40s, but don't call me a mess. And that's the tax deed. And this is the property that currently does not have any kind of development or trails running through it. The area all around it, most of which is owned by members of our association, has trails running all through it. We didn't build them. They were put there over the last two or three decades by trespassers, people building trails for their own use because this area is too widespread for any law enforcement to cover. People have known for a long time that they can go to this entire area without consequence. And as a result, this entire area you see has bike trails running all through it. When the snows come and the ice comes, the trees fall, everything is, all the damage remains on the ground except the damage on the bike trails. Somehow those always get cleaned up after an ice storm. We have trespassers of all varieties all over these properties. The information that's been put out is that the landowners here are afraid of attracting sex trafficking and drug use if we have mountain bike trails on this property. To be sure, we're not in favor of those things and certainly those exist in these days on that. But we're mostly afraid of people with mountain bikes. That area is not very fit for actual riding the bikes. All of our property around it is. We haven't had any ability to keep people off our property in the first place. If this is opened up and trails can be created and they will not be very substantial, this is not really a very large piece of land. It's pretty much a mountain biking equivalent of a hamster wheel. You can go from one end to the other. It's a little bit better than a quarter mile cross and between a quarter mile and half mile long. But all around this area are plenty of trails that are on our property that have been put there by other people that will certainly be the places where everybody will go once they get there, if they can get there. The suggestion has been made in the social media that we can put up signs and that will keep people out. We've got lots of signs, no trespassing signs up there. We have found that no trespassing signs along with a force field is a great way to keep people off the property. But our force fields don't work very well. We're still working on the technology. All we have are signs and we don't have any kind of law enforcement. But if there are biking trails that are operated by the city and owned by the city, you're going to need some way to get law enforcement there. Our history has been that it's almost impossible. The sheriff's office doesn't want any part of it. One reason why is it's because it's a very huge area and it's just difficult to police. But if this area is nestled in amongst these woods and it's heavily wooded and very rocky, very steep, it's very hard to get to, it's going to be very difficult for law enforcement to get there. It's going to be very difficult through any kind of ambulance or fire. There's any fire set there. There's no way anybody can get in to set them out. If anybody's injured, it's good luck getting them out of there.
Mr. Duke will give you a couple more minutes.
Actually, that's just about it. The only thing that I wanted to say is that the reason that we wanted to be here was first of all, just to let you know and the community know that there is another side to this story and we have some very strong and legitimate concerns. But we don't want this to be decided on social media. I know that members of this council and the mayor have been very gracious enough to engage with both people that have been, are interested in this idea and they're receptive to our concerns as well. But so far, everything that's been presented has been by proponents of these trails and it's been fairly one-sided. And it's easy for people on Facebook or social media to say, gosh, that sounds great. We have another side to tell. We have another side to tell, and before the city council makes any kind of action or spends money or makes a commitment on these trails, we would like for you to set a public hearing in order, so that we can present our evidence, we can present our history, we can present, and so can people that are advocating for these trails, let them present what they have in mind and what the costs are going to be, and make an informed decision. So far, it's just going on on social media, and that's why we wanted to be here. We very much appreciate your time, and thank you very much for sponsoring us. And I will go down and go sit down and end my piano aside.
Appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have a luck to make an issue? Most likely, I guess in this case, we'll try to give some time to the people who are supportive of the concept. We can spare about 20 minutes or so. Yes, sir? Please come to the microphone, tell us your name, and give us your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I have that, and I'm opposed to this, David. My name's David Thompson.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Go ahead, sir.
I oppose to this because, for one thing, I do have property out there. It's got 60 acres, been in our family for years. Now, all that stuff that the attorney said is nice. Probably have all that stuff, it's probably be nice if it happens. But I have another side that really bugs me, and that is, I have got more animals and dogs being dumped on my place out there. And you wouldn't even have anything out there right now. Now, I believe if you do get something like that out there, I've got seven of your dogs right now, and have as many as 50, because people dump them out there, and I don't want to see that. And if something like that happens, I'm going to see a lot of it. And it's going to cost me a lot of money because I don't get rid of them. I take them in, and I care for them. But at least, don't put something out there where everybody can dump them animals out there that I'm going to wind up with. I would appreciate at least letting you think about that side of it, that a lot of us have that. I think Dr. Lipton and him have the same problem. Right now, they're very restricted on where they can dump them. But you open up something like that, and all them trails, there're going to be dogs running around out there. I have to get rid of my wife and kids. Thank you, sir.
Dana, I've seen her hand come up. Somebody told me Dana Boran Bor, she, or she?
She's right there.
Behind the pole. There, it caught me, of course, so I apologize.
I'll go up there.
No.
One person at a time.
One person at a time. Okay. My name's Dana Boran. Good evening. I'm excited that everybody is out here. I've been mountain biking since I was 22, and I'm 45 now, and luckily, I still get to do it. And I do it with my son, who is too embarrassed to walk up here with me. So just wanted to tell you all a little bit about where we spend our weekends. We spend about two weekends a month at least over in northwest Arkansas. We have mountain biked, I won't say all of their trails, because they literally have thousands of miles of trails, but a significant number. We spend weekends over there going to festivals that are around mountain biking. The very first mountain bike trail I've ever taken bike on was the Wichita Trails in Wichita Falls, Texas, which I'm not sure, but I would venture to say it's less than 65 acres that they started their mountain bike park on. So we've traveled to Moab, Utah to ride Slip Rock, and gone to Big Bear in California. We've gone to Colorado to do downhill mountain biking. And so, not to just say that it's all about me, but it certainly is about the kids. It's also about watching these communities that have adopted this and the economic development that has followed. Seeing over in Bentonville near Slaughter Pen, and I know that's a horrible name, but that's what they named it, where homes that were barely making $100,000 just 10 years ago are now $350,000 homes. So opposition, what I would say is, anybody that has land for sale, I would love to buy it and a home to go with it, because I would expect that we can piggyback on what's happening in northwest Arkansas. And, you know, Claremore now has trails. Bartlesville is meeting with the Walton Foundation or the visit Bentonville next month to look at putting trails there. And that was their big question. You know, will people travel to communities this far apart to bike these trails? And the answer is yes. I go to Claremore, I go to Turkey Mountain, I do whatever I can around here. I ride Sequoia State Park. It's not really made for that. We have a group of women that meet on Sundays and ride, and then I take a group of high school kids to ride as much as I can. Along with that comes high school mountain biking teams that can be established. They're already established in the state of Oklahoma. They're in full force in Arkansas. So it is just growth all around if we can just embrace it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I wrote something down, so don't ramble too bad.
Just tell us your name, sir.
Chris Ray. I've spent a lot of time researching other trail systems, and I appreciate the fact that some of you have too. I see the kind of impact they have on their community, and I just want Tal qual to have the same thing. I've seen how a properly built trail can raise property value, reduce crime, and promote a healthier lifestyle. I want this to be a family place, a place that I can bring my daughter, who is going to be here tonight but wasn't feeling good. But she's a big inspiration to me and what keeps me motivated to push for this, and if you build this right, kids would be able to build one, probably. The demand is here, as you can tell by all the people that are here tonight. The land is already owned by the city, so that puts us ahead of most other communities who have to spend a fortune on a piece of land. We want to work with surrounding landowners so we can get the most out of the area, and if done properly, I believe it will benefit everyone. I also want to make sure that we take care of the issues that they are already having, like the drunk driver that I posted about, driving through the fence of one of the landowner's houses, rutting up the yard, and then driving back out. I want that kind of stuff to stop. I'd be willing to help out with some kind of fundraising event that could help purchase a gate or signage. I mean, if a gate was there, I don't know if a truck would have been able to drive right through that. I don't know. It may not solve all the problems right away, but it's a step in the right direction, and it lets people know that things are changing. It might take a long time to get this area where we feel completely safe, but you have to start somewhere, and I feel like we have the right kind of support from the community to band together and make a positive change. I think if we get this trail system started sooner rather than later, and with help from other trail builders, a lot of them are here tonight, and possibly bringing in a trail building company to give us professional advice that we can build something great. I want it to be done right and have certain people decide where the trail will go. If not, I'm afraid the trails will be poorly constructed, and it just, it can't happen that way. In order for it to work in the way that I feel would be most beneficial, especially for mountain biking, there needs to be properly planned out. And once that happens, we can utilize volunteer workers. Lastly, I think over time, if we connect the city trails to these new trails, we'll be well on our way to becoming an outdoor travel destination that will enhance what we already have with the river and the lakes and bring more people to Tal qual who will spend money here and help our community. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is John Bush. I'm the camp director at Camp Lutheroma, which is just on the east side of the Olini River. I've been here as camp director for 29 years, and for pretty much most of those years, we have really invested in our camp in doing a lot of adventure programming, including rock climbing, challenge course, rafting, and mountain biking. And so for 20-some years, we have all summer long taken kids mountain biking. And the difficulty that we have had, well, first of all, I want to say that we provide, you know, the bikes, the helmets, the gear, the train counselors to take them. And the problem, though, is that we've had to take them to Arkansas. We've either taken them to Devil's Den and State Park, or Samstir even further, or Lake Lincoln. We don't really want to go to Tulsa to do this, because a lot of our campers come from Tulsa, and that's like, hey, let's go back to your town, go back to camp. So that wouldn't really work too well. But we have had a wonderful experience with this mountain biking, and to have the opportunity, and what an incredible opportunity it would be for Camp Lutheroma, as an example, to strategically partner with the city of Tal qual to do this, because we would just love to have this opportunity right in our backyard. Instead of having to drive an hour and 45 minutes to haul a bunch of kids twice a week during every week of the summer to Arkansas, we just travel 15 minutes back to Tal qual, and they get a great experience. While they're here, we can stop in town, get a snack, and visit the town and stuff like that. Our kids come from all over Oklahoma, southern Kansas, you know, southern Missouri, western Arkansas. That's where all of our campers come from. So now you're, I am going to be able to, because of this partnership that we can have, expose a whole lot of people to Tal qual in a very, very positive way. And what a better way to think about it than to think about the fact that what we're saying is, we want to invest in kids. We want to teach kids this incredible hobby, this incredible sport. I've taken kids mountain biking for years, and I guarantee you, there's always kids who, that you're like, oh, my gosh, what a scary machine that you're asking me to get on and ride. I don't know how to work this thing. Within just a little bit of time, they learn to love it. And I have kids who now have it as a lifetime hobby because I introduced them to mountain biking. And the recreation and the fitness, I'm 58 years old, and I still go mountain biking. I love it. And I think that this would be a great opportunity for us to partner with you. Another way I see us partnering with you, sir, is Camp Lutheroma, is I would definitely be encouraged to have my counselors and my campers go and work on the trails, to maintenance them, to build them, to clean them up, not just to ride them, but as a service project to, blessings to Jesus Christ, to be able to say, this is our, this is what we're going to do to help this project along, not just use it, but to help it. So I think that there's a lot of opportunities here. I think the opportunities are for kids, and I think if it's done right, we can definitely help support the youth of our state and our region, bring new people to Tal qual that haven't been here before, expose them to this great town and the opportunities here. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me tell you one or two more.
Hi. Mayor, health members, it's very nice to be here. My name is Tegan Malone. I'm actually from Oklahoma City. I am the president of the statewide organization called the Oklahoma Earth Bike Fellowship. We are the group that builds and maintains mountain biking trails all over the state. So if you want to talk to a trail builder, here I am. I just wanted to say, we had an opportunity today. Wayne was kind enough to meet Chris and I, and we went out and walked the area. The land is amazing, and I'm kind of a nerd when it comes to, you know, seeing the topography and the landscape out there, and it's going to be a big asset. What I want to say on behalf of OEF is, you have got to give the surrounding landowners a voice. We want to work with them. We want to make sure that this is something that can, we can appease some of their fears and move forward and have, you know, as many people be happy as we possibly can. You have a very unique opportunity here right now to set a different culture. I know, you know, we talked at length today about, you know, how people like to just go off on these road trails and take their sixth pack of beer and get drunk and, you know, cause all sorts of mischief. That's not what we want. We want to help you guys institute programs like they've got in Tulsa that we're actually bringing in Oklahoma City right now called Bike Club, where they go into elementary schools and teach underprivileged children how to ride bikes, how to maintain bikes, because goodness knows we need to teach people who have that mechanical ability. They're teaching them all of these great things, and we can set the culture at a very early age, and we can teach these kids how to be great stewards of the land and how to take pride in what the city has and these amenities. Something that's great about the mountain bike community is, we police our own. If we have people coming in and they're doing things that we don't like, and we see that they're not taking care of the land, we jump all over them, and if we can't handle the problem, we refer it back to the police very quickly. Just wanted to bring up too, Byann right now is an OEF trail, and they are going to be groundbreaking here pretty quick and building probably about eight miles worth of trail out there, and it's going to be something spectacular, and it will be a draw. So, you know, you've got these draws all around you, and Tal qual needs to capitalize. And going back to what the attorney said earlier, yes, there is a trail rating system, and it's not widely used in Oklahoma. However, looking at the land today, there are some issues with some of the areas and the access, but it's not something that is, that we can overcome. We can build bridges, we can do all sorts of things. And going to that, I know people are thinking, well, that's going to cost money, and yes, it is. And we'll have to ask the city of Tal qual to put money up. The way OEF usually operates is, we do a fair amount of fundraising, we write grants. Just two weeks ago, I submitted a grant for the recreational trails grant. It's worth $228,000. And I included in there equipment to create maintenance hubs for all over the state, and I included Tal qual in that, not because I was anticipating it and okay, but because we've got the leeway to do that. So it would give about $21,000 worth of equipment to put here to build and maintain trails. Something else, you know, just looking at the land, you've got groups like Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and things like that. The last gentleman was absolutely correct. This is your opportunity to help the kids and set that culture and make a great statement for your dedication to what's going to happen in Tal qual in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Uzo, did you have a comment?
Yes, please. So, just a few comments. Apparently, the issue's rather complex, and I would suggest that the city council consider a feasibility study in terms of what the benefits of use of the property would be and see what the actual cost factors would be associated with the project, because if I heard the first presentation, it may be more complex than people want to address. And as the young lady just said a minute ago, in the building bridges and things like that, what's the cost going to be and who's going to fund the money, you know, for that, whether it's going to be grant money, city money, or whatever the project might be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we go much further, I do want to play up Mr. Uzo's comment. This is an awkward time to be having this conversation. This is a situation spun somewhat out of control. We, our process normally involves those kinds of things, but we were very quickly coming to grips with the fact that social media, of course, was honestly putting out some misinformation, and we had real trouble staying out in front of this issue and explaining to people what our thoughts were on property and everything else. We still have to do all of those things. We have completed our data gathering, analysis is complete, and I think if everybody will take a look at the documents, the information they've seen, none of them, literally zero, has come from the city of Tal qual. I just wanted to throw that out there right now, that a lot of what's being commented on has come from no one here, and that's been intentional. We're not to the point where we would, we haven't completed that process or gotten far enough into it for you to see documentation from us, at least not released. I mean, we've done a little bit of brainstorming, but nothing that was ready for public consumption in prime time, but we would certainly engage in that process a little later. I've been told Mr. Ed Feit, and the poll may have hidden him in the audience, I saw him out in the hallway earlier. Is he behind the pole again? It always works out that way.
He's back.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was passing a note that perhaps maybe you'd had a comment. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment at this time? Steve, maybe your last one. Just tell us your name, ma'am.
My name is Elizabeth Verben, and I've been a Tal qual resident for over 12 years, and I'm a mother of five young children. And I grew up in Oklahoma in poverty and very low income, and my family could never afford to do vacations, and so what we did is we went and we built wilderness camps, and we hiked, and I explored the woods. And at a very, very young age, I developed a passion for the outdoors, and that passion eventually became my profession, and it's more than anything that time and nature as a young kid is what led me to ultimately go on to get a PhD in biology. And during my time studying for my PhD, one of the things that I was assigned was to research the relationship between nature and childhood development, because as technology has developed, it's shifted the kids' focus from outdoor activities to indoors. And I know this is a struggle I have with my own children, trying to get them outdoors, engaged in nature and the environment. And so, large amounts of research has actually been devoted to studying the effects of nature or the lack thereof on the health of children. And all of the research has basically shown that the more time that you spend in nature, the more positive benefits there are for kids' physical, emotional, and mental health. It has shown an increase in confidence in children, increase in health and immunity and decreased allergies, an increase in imagination and creativity, an increase in responsibility and a care for the environment, decreases childhood obesity, decreases... and a care for the environment, decreases childhood obesity, decreases depression, stress, and anxiety, increases academic performance. And for me, even in my case, I feel like it is what got my family out of the cycle of poverty and all of these things. Research has shown this, and I think in my own life, I am kind of a testament to that. When I moved to Talalquah about 12 years ago, I was kind of surprised at the lack of natural resource development that we have. It's a very, I mean, I've worked all over the state in biology and in the environment, and it is one of the most beautiful areas in the state. And I really believe that Talalquah has a great potential for ecotourism that is completely untapped if it was developed properly. And I actually have had grand visions of massive trail systems that go all throughout the river region, much like you would see in the Buffalo National River in Arkansas. I have no experience in mountain biking, I would not use it for that at all, but I would love to see hiking trail developments, and I haven't talked to them to even know how much of this would be devoted to, you know, mountain bikes versus hiking trails, but I know it's something that I desire for my family, of raising them here, of having opportunities like that for them. And actually, about six years ago, we looked at property out off of Diedrich and Winston. Now, I don't know exactly where it is in relation to that, but we had looked at buying property there, because the location is so wonderful, the convenience close to the city is beautiful, we were so excited about the prospects, and when we got out there to look at the property, honestly, the main contributor of why we decided not to buy it was how much trash was in the area. Now, I want to make clear that I'm not talking about the landowners or the houses themselves, they're very nice, well-maintained homes out there, I'm sure the majority of it is probably illegal dumping. There were piles and piles of debris and trash trying to get access to the property where we were. And we saw the vision of what that property could be, and we knew it had great potential, but we had to ask ourselves, "How long would it take for that potential to be maximized? Do we really want to raise our children that every day to get access to our land that we have to drive by all these piles and piles of trash and debris?" And that's ultimately why we decided not to do that. And so, if these trail systems were there, it would probably actually make me regret that that was land that we didn't act on and purchase. And failing to develop that in a way is kind of the reason why we didn't, because we didn't feel like we had confidence in how long it would take for that area of town to be revitalized. I do respect the landowners out there, I mean, I agree that we need to do it in a way that actually increases their property values and protects them, but I think it would be a great asset to have, and I would love to see it in our community.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Nipper, and I want to-
Pam, if you could give me just a moment. We've gone about 20 minutes from each side, so if I can take a break very quickly to ask the council if they have any comments they'd like to make, or if they'd like to ask at this time, we'll do that now. Well, we will, but I just want to make sure after 20 minutes, I mean, it was almost to the nose from each side, make sure you all didn't have questions.
Do they have any questions for each of you, just like the others in bar?
Yes, or questions in general to, yeah, Mr. Duke, or anybody who's on the other side of the equation, just like-
I did have a quick question for Mr. Duke. In your presentation, you mentioned signs, no trespassing signs, law enforcement needs to access it, and you mentioned you had issues with the sheriff's office before. Has there been situations where the sheriff's office has been called over trespassers and they've refused to reply, or?
It's not that they refuse to reply, it's just that there is very little action. If you have a trespasser on property and you want to ask the sheriff to come and find the trespasser, by the time they can get out there, there's very little they can do. Yes, the sheriff's office has on a number of occasions just said that there's not a whole lot, we can't send somebody out into the woods looking for the trespasser. And so, we have, I'll say, we've learned that it's a pretty futile effort to try to get the sheriff out, they just don't have the manpower, and they don't have the ability to come. This is heavily wooded, rocky territory, they don't have the equipment, they don't have the ability to go trucking in and away for this type of situation.
Thank you, that was my only question.
Anything else? Nipper?
Yeah, hello.
My name is Pam Nipper, and I am one of the landowners. I will just have to say that I don't respect the way we've been talked to on social media at all. One of my biggest concerns is that there are no roads at all. If you looked at that land, if there were a fire of any sort set up there, it would literally burn from that location clear through my house and clear to Ed Fite's and over to Highway 10 before anybody could get it stopped. And I have spent my life savings buying my property, building my home, that is my backyard. And I know it's not just a small lot in town, I used to live on one of those, but I love the woods just as much as all of these people do. But if something happens to that woods, you can't replace it in my lifetime. It's gone. And we battle with fires up there at that old dump area all the time, and they have had two or three trailers that have been burnt. At the point in time that my house was under construction, I just had neighbors showing up because it was coming through the woods. And that can happen at any point in time, and the wind changes up there at will. But there is absolutely no way to get in there, you can't do it. There are no roads, unless you want to get on a dirt bike and move, and you can't carry much water with that. But I just don't think that enough research has gone into this before we ever got to this point in time. You know, is the property available, can we even get an easement in? Is the county on board? You know, maybe the county doesn't want to build the road, maybe they don't have the funds, maybe they don't want to maintain it, because I hear of that in multiple areas. So, before all of this happened and we get everybody's anxieties up, I think that there should have been a lot of research done prior to this point in time, as well as getting the landowners involved.
Ms. Nipper, I would only reiterate that that would have been the process Mr. Uzo was referring to, and that we intended to do that part of any of the-
I understand, but I'm just saying, after your first meeting and where it was tabled, if you had said to them, "Hey, you know, we got to first off, find out how do we get this land, you know, how did we get it, and can we get to it, how much money is it going to cost, and do a little bit of research there before we have these pie-in-the-sky ideas." I just think a business plan would have been in order.
If there were some attendees at that meeting that night, if they'd like to explain what caution I did provide regarding this property, it'd be very helpful. I think that I did mention those exact things, that Rogers, would you like to, you were the one that set that meeting up?
First of all, my name is David Rogers. We weren't planning on building no road in, there's a trail in and a trail out. Everything Jason says is true. You got to start somewhere, so it was a conversation and just a talk of trying to figure out how to do this and how to develop it. And in my heart, it's only going to up the property value and clean up a certain part of the area, not all the land around it that's beautiful, because that's already cleaned up, and talking about where the old city dump. That would be, I want to buy property up there if this goes down. So, we just started by grassroots conversation, and we talked to Jason, because that's who you talked to, the mayor, when I found out there is property up there. So, you know, we're going to back off, we're going to do a little research and kind of figure out, you know, what you landowners need and be protected. A lot of people say, "Well, are you guys going to put up a fence?" Well, maybe if the money's there, and maybe the landowners need to put up a fence, just like in town, if you don't want someone to go through your property. So, you know, we're just starting, it's a long conversation, and that's all that's going to go down, you know? And we got to start somewhere, so here we are. So, let's get started, that's all I'm saying. Start discussion.
Thank you. My name's Deborah McAllister, I live in Sparrow Hawk, so therefore, I have the trails. We have the fires, I am the captain of my volunteer fire department. We have the fires, we have the people that get lost on the trails, the children that we go find. But it's a beautiful area, and it needs to be used, and I don't feel bad. There are no, there's very little drunken driving down there, the chief of police doesn't know this, but the county does. It doesn't bring in a crowd that's bad, it brings in a crowd that's good. People that purchase mountain bikes, that want to bring their kids out, do it for the right reason, not the wrong reason, and we should support that. Living in Sparrow Hawk, I support it. I pick up trash along the roads with the community every year. We do a pie auction, we do other things out there to support our small community. But those trails are utilized by, I'd be willing to bet, almost everybody in this room. And it's a beautiful area, it should be shared, it should bring more people to Talalquah. We have an amazing opportunity here, I've been here seven years, I'm an orthopedic surgeon at Hastings Hospital, my great-grandparents are buried here, I love this place, I'm home. Let's share our beautiful home with people and make it good for the children. It's a healthy thing to go hike and bike, let's get our BMIs down in this community.
Councilors, one last call for comments or questions, anything that you'd like to say, ask.
The only thing I'd like to say is that I have been out, I have looked at other cities, not only in Northwest Arkansas. Did go to Claremore on a Monday morning, and ran into a gentleman all the way from Oklahoma City with his family, just to ride that trail, mountain bike trail that goes on 10 acres, that they're having a state sanctioned race this weekend. But he was excited, he heard a lot about it, but his days off hadn't been working for him, so he came up on Monday morning and took his family and went riding. I went to Salem Springs this morning, went and looked at their property, they're building a brand-new mountain bike trail, phenomenal. There's a huge house right across the street from it, the county road goes up there, but it is fenced off, these people have full access to watch these bikers all over this trail. I am in agreement that we need to do some more study on it, so I'm open, and you guys have valid concerns, and we need to address those too.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, councilors?
Mayor, can I just reiterate, the intent of the item was so that both sides could sit at the table together peacefully and communicate like they are tonight, and I'm sure many of you know, but some of you might not know, because I know there's a lot of new faces that I've never seen here before, we as councilors, we can't just all sit down and go to lunch together and talk about these things. When we sit together as a group, we have to do it in this room with being recorded in an open meeting. And so, a lot of times when people will communicate with Dowler, or Stephen, or Josh, we don't all get the identical information, the identical, in the identical same format, the identical presentation. But when we do it here, when everyone comes to the podium, we all get the information that's shared, so we can truly all be on the same page, because I've been reading the many, 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 many social media posts that are out there. So, anyway, I appreciate everybody who came and shared, and I completely agree with what the mayor said, that feasibility studies, that we can look at cost, and to the legal points that I'm sure Grant will bring to us after everything's been brought to us tonight. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you, everyone.
Anyone on this side?
Remove a motion, let's look at facts, and not the pop bubbles, but the wheels of government turn extremely slowly, so if anything happens, it may be years, so just know that going forward, but yes, more conversation, more facts.
We tried to approach it that way, and there just were some things that were not anticipated, and things started to get out of control on social media, and we couldn't wrap our arms around it. Believe me, I think that a couple of us up here have tried, we thought, "Yeah, it may be best to go ahead and vote on the agenda and just let people have the conversation." And so, we saw some breakthroughs strangely on social media last night, where some people had contacted one another and had some conversations, and began to be more open-minded about the perspective of people on the other side of the issue, and I thought that was encouraging, because we spent a month trying to tamp down the flames, I mean, to keep passions kind of contained, and then we were unsuccessful in doing that. And then I would reiterate that we followed the process that Mr. Uzo was carrying out. In fact, that's the commitment I made to the people in the meeting at the coffee shop that night, that there will be a trail system. And if we run into a technical problem here, or the landowners, you know, point something out that we can't overcome, address, it's insurmountable, we can do it somewhere else. We're committed to this concept, this seemed like an opportunity, but if there are things that trip us up, then we will figure out how to do it. And I believe that was the basis of my commitment that night, and I'll stick to that here tonight. So, we will get this done, even if it's not there, something will happen.
I would, Mayor, I would-
Go ahead, yes, sir.
I would just like to say, I'd like to see some action steps happen, and I know that maybe, you know, tonight isn't the time to, you know, finalize a plan, but I think that there, to get some steps in place, and whether that be essentially the formation of a committee or a group that can come together, because I think what's happening is, we're having conversations to some extent in silos. We're having, you know, this group is having a conversation, and then some people go to this group and have a conversation, you know. Personally, you know, I've met with the landowners, but I haven't met with the trail system people, but I've read some of the things that happen on Facebook, and I've answered and read the many, 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 many emails that I've gotten, and I think that everybody has legitimate concerns, everybody has legitimate questions, and I think people's minds and hearts are in the right place, but I think that we need to foster that conversation together. And I think that it's happened a little bit tonight, but I think we, it needs to happen in an environment that the people can sit down, we can talk about real action steps, real concerns, real possibilities for what could happen in this town. So, I don't know if a motion is in line to form some sort of committee, or if that can just be something that happens, you know, we kind of have set our peace, and now we formed this committee outside of that. But I think I would like to see that step happen, that way we can, we can continue the conversation outside of here, and hopefully, maybe the wheels of government won't turn so slow that we have to turn.
Would that committee include research and prices on what a study would cost to formally do this thing, because I've heard, you know, there's not going to be an expense involved, and then-
You're buying into social media.
There might be, well, you said the last, I don't know, okay, like, yeah, I've heard there's no expense involved.
Where'd you hear that, social media?
And I've heard that we're going to concede money into it. I've heard a lot of different things, so I would like something more concrete.
And we haven't had the time to develop-
We're going to put money into it, I would like to see what that's going to be.
Just my personal opinion, I think that needs to happen. I mean, I think every email that I answered, I think I, you know, I answered with, there's logistical concerns, I think, you know, that we've heard today about how do we get to the 65 acres, you know, what does the trail system look like when it's on the 65 acres? I'll be the first to admit, I'm not an expert, I don't know how that will play into it, and so I think there's some logistical conversation that needs to happen, and I think there's a financial conversation that needs to happen. Will the city's financial responsibility be? You know, in 30 days, in three years, and in 30 years, what does it look like for the city, what does that financial obligation look like for the city for taking something like this on? And I think that we have experts, you know, we've heard from experts that can help us with that, and so, just, I would really like to- And so just, I would really like to see the formation of some working group. I don't know. So I don't know if a motion is in order for that or if that's just something, you know, you've heard my piece and, you know, it happens or how they do.
Just FYI, I had the message from the crowd. They're having difficulty hearing us in the back. So if we could...
I'm sorry.
I think we're used to having a group of 10 to 20 and not 150. So it's our apology.
I'll start over with everything that I said. I pulled my microphone away because of coughing, so I don't want to cough in everybody's ear all night.
Hell, that last person said something about how it reduces allergies. Was trying to make a direct appeal with me, in case you can't tell, I'm having a hard time to see if you can.
Since the land does belong to the city, I think we should go ahead and petition the commissioners to get that, actually legally get to do these stuff.
Just for access for analysis, is that what the... Okay. So I have a motion from Council Combs, a petition to county commissioners for access so that we can continue our evaluation, as suggested, as always intended, even though we never got there. I think I fed it in your motion. You want a motion to get access from the commissioners through these and so we can continue our analysis and feasibility evaluation through. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second from Council Combs and Council Hires? And then Council Hires? Go right ahead.
I think that's a logical first step. I think it's going to be a partnership, if it happens, between the city and the county. So I think that is a positive first step. And so I think while we're making motions, if Council Combs would agree to it, I'd like to add to his motion to form a working group that can work through some of the issues that we've heard tonight and help put, help start spinning the wheels to work through these issues.
And we also request that the county commissioners be a part of that working group since there also sounds like they have some costs since this is outside of our scope.
Actually, they probably wouldn't, but they will involve them in a petition, but I don't know that it'll have any cost involved. I mean, I could be correct on that, so I'm proceeding.
You can correct my motion statement if you'd like.
Yeah, we have an amended motion to include the formation of a working group. And here's a second.
Can I still speak?
Absolutely.
Do we have a recreation advisory committee?
We do.
Do we know who's on that committee off the top of our heads?
Off the top of my head. But certainly we'll put a group together and get some input from you all and get that working group going. And hopefully bring some credibility to it. I know that's been strained for reasons beyond our control, but we'll try to get that put together. But a motion, we're always going to give out on it. A motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Sure. You can ask it if you want, but it's fine to combine it. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Did you say combine or?
Yeah.
Council Long?
Yes.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Don't sound too happy, counselor. We will put the group together and basically engage in a slightly modified form, the process that we always do. I keep looking at Mr. Uzo because I just want to say thank you for bringing that up because it was what we had always intended, but we just took the torpedo inside before it genuinely began. So thank you all for being here. If you want to remain and be entertained for the remainder of the evening, feel free. Otherwise, we'll give everyone about 90 seconds to leave the room. And we blame you. I just had a cross my mind. Take their leave if they were no longer interested in the remaining items. We have handled item number six. It may have been an hour, so maybe you forgot what item that was, but now we're at number seven, which is discussion and possible action to accept and/or enter into the land lease agreement between the city of Talapaw and Allo Communications LLC. New business ads for Verizon Wireless regarding property located at Antis Brennan. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a cell tower location that we've been working on for a number of years. I presented you a special use permit back in May that you approved for this location. It's at Antis Brennan Sports Complex. It's just west of the softball fields, north of the football field. It's a 25-year lease that starts with a five-year term and then four renewable five-year terms. Hopefully, it was in your package and you had a chance to look at it. It is lengthy. City Attorney Lloyd has looked at it and approved. We had some back and forth with Verizon negotiating the numbers involved in the term. And I think we definitely came out better than their original proposal. You have questions about this cell tower contract?
Any exhibits? Any exhibits? I see where Sheldon become exhibit B, but here in exhibit A, I didn't get them in line, Councilman. I was wondering if they were included. White can't. Is this the one that's like in center field or something where it's...
It was when it was first surveyed.
Surveyed.
Yeah. And then it was relocated.
We get that worked out.
Yep. And they also provided a lump sum for the purchase of scoreboards for the softball fields as well. We began this a while back.
Yep.
I mean, Mr. Smith was still with us. We talked about scoreboards, we moved them out and all kinds of things, cars, and then great, polished it up a little bit and make sure we get some things out of it. And I was a genius that insisted we use it as the foul pole out there in the Comcat. They moved it outside.
Now, this plan, this is the one that was originally going to be on the industrial board with the TIA date, correct?
That was the proposed location, yes. They did some geotechnical discovery and found that it was unsuitable to build the tower there. And so this was their second location.
Great, you were okay with all the language in this?
Yeah, it's legally purposeful. I'm here to finesse the financial value associated with it.
We're just not promising a grant yet, right? We're doing...
Yeah, yeah. You guys can interrupt it if you choose to or you can suggest. And then it's up to you all.
So the money that we receive each year annually was like $8,400, $500 or something after the initial purchase?
Yeah, there's an annual rental of $8,400 that they're going to pay monthly installers.
Leave that for like that fee for the parts or...
Well, Clint was, Clint's trying to, he knows that we've had conversations about it. He goes back into general fund at the current time, but we had some intent of stacking this money on top of some other smaller things like this to put into his effort fund that would be kind of a parts improvement fund. Not even that, again, that's very conceptual, but we had designs on trying to, what do you call it, earmark this for... But the initial lump sum fee will be...
Scoreboard.
Scoreboard.
Doesn't have to be the way it's written, though.
Correct.
Can be used, please.
Okay, fair point, that's right. But we agreed to scoreboards and have been talking about scoreboards for five years, but... And we need scoreboards. And we do need scoreboards.
Fair enough. I'll just clarify, it's not the contract that we...
We don't have to put Verizon on the scoreboard.
Correct. Really? You may have touched it. You may have touched it, but where is this going to be located? Inside Antis Brennan?
I know where it's not.
The northwest corner.
About 150 feet northwest of left field in that softball, football softball. All right.
And it's going to be...
Meeting was in May.
It's going to be gated?
It's going to be fenced. A few fences.
And landscaping?
Didn't we...
We negotiated it.
Obviously, you negotiated it.
Privacy fence.
Yes, it's a privacy fence. We had talked about it, but...
I see. Okay. Because the landscaping would, I got you, the landscaping would have involved more maintenance.
Where does that fit into the overall plan of Antis Brennan?
Over in there.
Probably there, probably four spinners.
I mean, maybe we could put, you know, we've talked, as far as Antis Brennan, it's not going to...
Doesn't interfere with the wall.
Interfere with any of the projected plans and parkers and trails or the, it's not going to get in the way of any of that. Any of the construction for those things is going to go across the easement where they may have something there.
Yeah, we'll have plenty of room. We have multiple accesses to the possible areas for future development.
Counselors, if you don't have any other questions, we've been paying a motion this time.
I've got one question. Has the due diligence with the FAA been completed?
Yes. Yeah, that was, that was what I was referring to earlier. This applicant applied for a special use permit and that the first stop was planning and dummy commission. And we were not going to allow that until FAA no hazard letter was issued for this project.
I'm sorry, Clint, did we also discuss back in May and said it's being, we've talked about this before, that if we deny it, then they can just go right across the street or a few feet away in the county and still do the same thing with no, and as a city, we would have no control over that destruction?
Correct. Yeah. Our jurisdiction is a few hundred feet, it is a few hundred feet away. And I'm sure there are other property owners that would like to have $4,000 a year.
And the only reason it's our jurisdiction is because we own it. I mean, it's technically in the county now, but there's a law basically says our rules warrant supply on our property, so.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah. We've been here a long time already. Let's go. Yeah, we're ready for a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the land lease agreement asked for.
Motion and a second. The council is long and hot, I see, the Combs respectively. Got confused for some reason. Any other questions or comments?
I just ask that you guys actually have the right to, but A and B present the...
Do I need to modify my motion to do that?
Yeah.
Do I need to, I need to rescind, make a motion to rescind?
You're going to...
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend and include the language that Grant has stated that we actually include the correct exhibit A and exhibit B.
And we're good with that? Okay. Mr. Uzo, you had one quick comment?
Yeah. I just wanted to know, during the negotiation process, did you all determine the economic drive, the airspace in similar communities?
We didn't, no. Okay. No, sir, we did not do that. Gosh, a due diligence, I apologize. But we did look at what other communities and other places for cell towers.
I just, I wanted to make a quick comment. And I just want, I think I told Clint, he was looking at it like he's... I just, I'm going to vote no. I just can't wrap my head. I think it's the cosmetic issue for, it's not yet completely, but I just drive into town and I see the towers that are in our downtown area. And I just wish back in the day that people would have said no to that. And so I think that we're building this nice, state-of-the-art sports park, and I just don't think that this is the right spot for something like this. And I understand it's nice because the money, they're going to pay money to the city for this. And I understand that they can, if we say no, they can just go right next and put it up. But I just can't wrap my head. I mean, I think that's what we're voted here to do, is to vote our conscience. And I just, every time I come into, pull into downtown, I see those towers, I just don't like them and I don't...
Do you like high-speed internet?
Place. I do, but it's nothing against, you know, it's not good emotional here. I understand, and it's not that I have anything against the cell company. It's not that I don't want us to progress. It's not that I don't want, I just don't like the...
Wait, now I've had minor reservations about the aesthetics as well. When Steven Lee denied it, suddenly back to 3G service. Mr. Hirsch, very quickly?
May I ask why the location was picked there and not somewhere not as community-based as a sports center?
You have Horizon. Horizon selected, and they base it on a lot of technical things. It's difficult to find a non, you're talking about radios with range and it gets pretty technical.
Yeah, that's basically what it is. And we do have an opportunity to fix our emergency antennas onto this tower as well. Fire and police.
Just to be clear, that'd be a different negotiation.
Can you put your microphones on it?
Our microphones aren't on. I think that's why you can't.
They're on. Well, just ours, it's not them.
Click it when I click it. Or even vote, but you can't say that. Any other very quick questions or comments? Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Council Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
No.
Council Bliss?
No.
You're kidding. Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm very bad at predicting which items are going to end up in my lap. So very quickly there. So we went to item number eight, which is discussion and possible action to adopt number 1253, 2018, rezoning the property located at the southwest corner of the intersection, North Cedar Avenue and Dedrick Lane, from single-family dwelling district R1 to multiple-family dwelling district R3, planning and development director, Clinton Johnson.
So if you're having deja vu, you're not, you're thinking you're having it. This is the fourth time we've talked about this property. This is actually the second reading of 1253, 2018. The city made an error when this was rezoned in May and the ordinance wasn't published in a paper of general circulation within 14 days. And so it null-avoided our action when you guys voted to approve R1, changed to R3. So I think that I have a stack of staff reports here for you, but...
And this is the second second reading, not the first second reading?
It's the fourth.
Second second read.
So it's an actionable item?
It is. We've lived in this course.
And we really enjoyed telling Mr. Boatright that all those people were here to oppose his rezoning rather than...
Oh, man.
Is he still here?
No, he's...
He got scared.
Yeah. I hope that you all are kidding because we did enjoy it. By the way, we need to change the word. Aren't there three words in the English language, the word dwell and windle? DW. Only three words in the English language that start with DW?
You don't like dwelling districts?
I hate saying dwelling district. It's hard to get. Let's see what I can do about it. Okay. New ordinance, all in Kansas, hard to say DW word in public. Counselor, do you want to make a motion on this technical thing?
Second.
I'm assuming to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have that, clerk? Go ahead and give us a roll call, please.
Council Combs?
Yes.
Council Hires?
Yes.
Council Bliss?
No.
Council Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I think you voted that one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to adopt resolution number 03-05-18, a resolution supporting the modernization of Cherokee County alcohol laws. Councilor Combs and Mr. Steven Wright.
This is a, an issue that has a huge economic impact on our city and bringing in people businesses. So they didn't turn over you.
Yeah. Fair. My PowerPoint's good. Hi, everybody. I'm Steven Wright. I'm here to talk to you today about modernizing Cherokee County's alcohol laws. There are some things coming October 1st that I don't think a lot of people are aware of, and I'd like to bring that to light. I do want to say that this is not a city matter, just looking for the city's support in this to let it go to vote to the people of Cherokee County. All alcohol will be illegal in restaurants on Sundays in Cherokee County on October 1st. Currently, beer is legal. Currently, beer is legal. On October 1st, it will be not, will not be. We will be a dry county. Alcohol in restaurants and bars is referred to as alcohol or liquor by the drink. Current laws were put into place in 1985. This is a copy of the ballot right there. What we did was we voted for alcohol to be legal on every day but Sunday. And it also included Election Day and Christmas Day. From the 1985 law, alcohol by the drink is still legal on Sundays and on some holidays in Cherokee County. 3-2 beer is not considered alcohol by the state of Oklahoma. It is considered a food item, so it's lapping. Oklahoma is redefining the term alcohol to include all beer. The state will convert to six-point beer, 3-2 will go away. So now that all beer is considered alcohol and not food, all Cherokee County restaurants will now be dry on Sundays. We don't have the 3-2 loophole anymore. Our restaurants will not be able to serve on Sundays anything at all. No beer, no wine, no margaritas, no Bloody Marys, no mimosas, nothing on Sundays. There are people that drive to Muskogee for a Bloody Mary. It's crazy.
They don't like the rules.
No, this is bad. The counties in the whites are the counties that do not have any of these laws. These are the counties we're trying to be like. This is our competition. The counties in the red are dry counties, and the counties in yellow are the counties that are just like us. Without Sunday sales, our local economy will suffer. Jobs will be lost. Buffalo Wild Wings, if they cannot serve a beer on a Sunday, or Chili's, it's not gonna be a good thing for them. Restaurants will close. Growth will slow. Look at those breadsticks. Attracting new restaurants will be nearly impossible. We will never get an Olive Garden if they can't serve wine on Sundays. That sounds funny, but it's true. It will never, ever happen, ever. And everybody wants an Olive Garden. We can change this. This law can only be changed by a vote of the people. The council can't change it, the commissioners can't change it. It can only be changed by a vote. The county commissioners can allow alcohol by the drink on the June ballot in Cherokee County if they so vote. There's support in the community. Cherokee County voters overwhelmingly approved modernization of state alcohol laws when they voted in favor of state question 792, which is what brought us six-point beer in 2017. It, I think, was a 64% vote. Rogers County enacted similar laws, and they saw a 20 to 50% gain in sales of both food and alcohol after passage of Sunday sales. But that was in 2014. I've signed letters of support from all of these restaurants. The Talalawea Chamber of Commerce, Tite, Red Moon Wild Wings, Chili's, The Branch, The Twig, Los Maracas, El Mociente, Cook's and Ben Marina's. The Marina's are in on this, too. If they get shut down on Sundays, it's gonna be a big problem. Cherokee Springs, Rib Creep Piddles Place, The Deck, Cantina Bravo, The Grill and The Drift. This is just what we gathered up in a few days. I'm sure we can get every restaurant in town on board with this. Save our jobs, keep our restaurants open, support our tourism industry, create new jobs in new restaurants, recover missed sales tax dollars, and make Cherokee County regionally competitive. Please support the county commissioner's decision to put alcohol by the drink on the June ballot for Cherokee County. And if you want to have more information or fill out your support, you can do so at supportcherokeecounty.com. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has. I've been moonlighting with this, so I've been zorked at all.
Stephen, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention and taking initiative on it. I know you spend a lot of your time making phone calls, contacting people and advocating for this. Everybody that's coming, we appreciate this, because I am one of those people who would love to have an Olive Garden along with a couple of beers and a glass of wine would be awesome, too.
Correct.
So, thank you very much.
Any questions or comments, counselors? This looks like a water bottle, but it's really gin, so I'm all...
Well, I would happily make a motion. It's a super happy motion, Stephen. It's the happiest motion I've made since I've been on council that we support resolution to modernize Cherokee County alcohol laws as presented.
Motion and second, counselors, uh, Long and... I promise, it really is a gin. I'm getting names. Counselor Long, Counselor Combs. Any comments or questions or comments? Can we ask a quick? Yes, sir. Have you thought about or going to take any public polling? See if you have a feel for it? Or are you just gonna go, we're gonna go straight to the ballot? Um, I've talked to a lot of people in the public. The general consensus from the economic standpoint, it has to be done. There is a feeling that maybe some people aren't super excited about it, but that's where it goes to county vote. We need to let the people of Cherokee County decide and not try and figure out what everybody wants. What this would do is it would just put us on the same level as the state. If the state wants to make a law, it would apply to us, but we're not going to restrict ourselves any more than the state. So it would not let Muskogee County or Rogers County be ahead of us economically.
Does this affect the, uh, sorry, convenience stores or Walmart selling beer on Sunday at all?
No, this is not packaged liquor. That doesn't change. Liquor stores are... Yeah, liquor stores are still closed on Sundays. And, um, yeah, they changed nothing about that. This is only in restaurants, and it is still only from 10 to 2. So it doesn't change any hours, it doesn't do any of that. So it does not touch packaged liquor, yes.
So packaged liquor at 3.2% will not go away in convenience stores?
Everything will be, will be six-point. If they want to have 3-2, they can, but they will also have six-point. What they're doing is they're redefining alcohol.
Correct.
So 3-2 used to be food, and it was managed by tax commission. Now it will be alcohol, and it's managed by the labor commission. So all liquor stores, I mean, convenience stores, I think, will have to have a liquor's license. I didn't get into that, and I'm not wanting to. This is restaurants. But that 3-2 beer would fly right off the shelves.
Shannon, this is related to Stephen's stuff here. This is like the city's statement specifically to restaurants and by the drink. City Bill 211 passed last year, which does allow counties also to make a vote where we can open up a little store and others sell on Sundays as well. But that would be another, you know, county vote, which is different than what Stephen's working.
Not me.
People were asking questions about it.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions, counselors? Well, my just means we're not, I apologize. Well, we entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I was telling you, it's mine. I apologize.
Super happy motion.
Super happy. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Three presidents next time.
All right, next up is item number eight, which is discussion and possible action to approve the initial policies of the new Alcohol Police Department policy manual, policies 100, 103, and 203, 207. Chief King.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, counsel. You have proposed policies in your packet. There is one amendment. I actually left that at the office. So, Counselor Bliss may have pointed out to me, because he's the one that brought it up ahead of time. But these have gone to the FOP for review about a month ago. This, the policies are developed through Lexipol, which is a risk management company specifically for law enforcement. O-MAG, our insurance provider, has contracted with them, and so these have been vetted by Lexipol, been vetted by FOP Legal Counsel also. And there is one amendment in them. Remind me what policy number it is, Counselor Bliss?
Uh, the disclaimer policy 103.2.1.
103.2.1. I would like to recommend, assuming that these are approved, that in that motion, the language be added to 103.2.1, that any revision to policy or new policies must be approved and acknowledged by the city council.
Chief King, we also have the same or similar language in page 33, 103.5. It would also need to be included in that notification.
103.2.1 and 103.5. You know, some radio VJs. You need to contract that.
103.2.1 and 103.5.
Well, I would think that Mr. Attorney would, would the disclaimer cover... There's a couple of places where...
It talks about revision or issuance. Would that main disclaimer, would it cover the rest of the manual?
It should. 103.5, what were you concerned about there, Bree?
Um, I think it says, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to lose the language. No changes shall be made to the manual without authorization from the chief of police or the authorized designee. If any of those changes would technically have to come to us for a blessing, correct?
Right, but the general...
In the general disclaimer, I think we covered anything else that we missed in there as it come up. I have about 60 of these policies ready to bring to you, but I didn't want to bombard you, so basically we'll have about 10 per meeting for about six months or so. We have quite a few of them total that we're still every week going through them, so.
I want to thank you for giving us a little live reading at the weekend. I appreciate it, ma'am.
Every Wednesday at 1:00, if anyone wants to participate in that three-hour conference call with Lexipol reviewing and editing policy.
I did just want to compliment you. It was the formatting of this, it's very nice formatting, it's very well, and it's very clean to you, professional. And I appreciate how you clarified what was state law versus what was best practice, what was over a, I believe the other county's discretionary. So, I think that's very useful for us.
And that's something we can thank Lexipol for. They've been in business for a long time, and they're very good at risk management for law enforcement. Yes, sir? Counselor Hires?
Sorry, I should have dropped to it before I stuck that one up. And one, one place in here, you talk, it shows requirements for the chief of police. So to be the chief of police, you have to...
That was under the state.
It's basically covered in state statute for the appointment...
Oh.
Selection of chiefs. Yeah, selection of your chiefs, chiefs of police, no matter where you're at, is either by appointment of the governing body or election itself.
Okay, so that, okay, well, then you answered my question.
I asked Lexipol about that specifically, and they said that language is fine because the state statute itself says, basically, the appointment comes from either the governing body or the election, self-certified election.
Well, that was my question, because we have the ordinances, well, we have the town charter and we have the ordinances. And they kind of lay out everyone and what, who can and who can and what, all of that happens. And now we have administrative policy. And so it's more restrictive than our charter and our...
Well, and one of those things is like, um, one of the restrictions is to be police certified, I believe. That doesn't have to, that doesn't have to be in place when you're elected, per se. You have that first year to attend the mandatory O-MAG chief's training and become police certified. If after that first year you didn't meet one of those two requirements, then you can be removed from office, whether you're appointed or elected. You have certain guidelines that you don't have to be police certified prior to being a candidate.
Basically, it's like us, only on a larger scale. I mean, we have to, after we're elected, we have to attend the municipal training. If we don't, then we can be removed from office for that.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, you keep moving seats.
I'll motion to approve what you're willing to change.
Second.
Motion and second, Counselor Bliss and Counselor Wright. Aren't any of their comments, and didn't appear that there were? Take a roll, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Chief, just stay right there for a bit. Yes, sir. Item number 11, which is discussion and possible action to accept additional funds from the Oklahoma Highway Safety Office in our current occupation protection grant in the amount of $5,500 and amend the current grant budget to reflect an increase of $5,100 in salaries and $400 in grant benefits. Go ahead, Chief.
Sorry, it's wordy. I thought we could kind of cut one agenda item out if we were a little more descriptive. Highway Safety Office has given us mid-contract funds for the enforcement of underage drinking. We're just asking that the city acknowledge that, accept that, and then we make the proper finance changes to our budget and loan of that account, basically. Appropriation to that account.
Will entertain a motion, Counselors?
Second.
No, that was just... I'll go with the two I left, Counselor Combs and second by Counselor Long. Roll call, please, clerk.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12, the discussion and possible action to accept 2017 DOJ Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant and create a budget for the grant in the amount of $3,633.74, which will consist of $1,816.87 in the city portion and a loan of $1,816.87 that will be reimbursed by the Department of Justice. Chief King?
Once again, DOJ grant that we've received for a number of years to help us purchase bulletproof vests for our officers. This is a matching funds grant, so we're required basically to match 50% or basically match what they give us. We were awarded $1,816.87 by DOJ, so obviously we have to pitch in. This is, I would like to say, each year we, in our initial budget, we set money aside for grants, for matching funds. So this is not money that would actually come from the general fund. It would be moved from our money that's already set aside earmarked for that.
I would like to make a motion that we have presented.
Motion and second, Counselor Long and Counselor Combs.
Other place.
I was gonna ask if there were any. Counselor Hires?
Um, and this may be, just to go down, but the budget amendment that we're approving, I don't know if it matters. I mean, I think that it does. The amendment number is 35-2018. The one that we just approved, amendment number is also 35-2018. I don't know if we need to put a B on one or another.
I think, Daniel, it would just be the amendment number is incremented to 19, right? Do I have that right?
36, 35, 18, dash 1.
Right.
You just take the amendment number for that part.
Oh, well, Daniel, have you adopted a new system on for the amendment numbers? I apologize. Okay, then we can just add a B. I don't think that's an issue in this sort of shape. Okay, yeah. Counselors, you've heard the presentation. Is there a motion? I'm telling you, my, my, it's going to get me turned around. I apologize, I've even gotten it written on my paper. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 13 is presentation and discussion and possible action in regard to adding school resource officer positions with the police department. Chief King?
I probably had the best PowerPoint presentation of all, but you've already been through two of them, so I'm going to spare you unless it's absolutely necessary tonight. You've all received this presentation in your packet. I would entertain any questions, if you have any, at this time. Put three different proposals in there. We have met with a school, and in principle, the school is willing to split the cost of three positions to full-time, one part-time, up to two full-time and one part-time. Once again, as the proposal states, um, I'm ahead enough in salaries for this budget year to cover the salaries for the remainder of the fiscal year, I believe. And so, there it is. This is, this is a problem or an issue that we've been lucky in Talalawea. You know, I was at the middle school today, and Mr. Bush, who's a longtime Talalawea employee, Talalawea Public Schools employee, was a Fort Gibson School employee when they had their shooting.
Back in '99?
Back in '99, a long time ago. And it's something that he can attest to. It changes not just the school system, but a community when something like this happens. Talalawea has, Talalawea Police Department has a four-minute, 50-second response time on average. But the Parkland shooting took about six minutes. So a four-minute, 51-second response... So a four-minute, fifty-one-second response time doesn't do much good, but get there a little quicker to help cover bodies. Um, we, we need to have a police presence in our schools. These are, these are our babies. Our kids, our grandkids, our nieces, our nephews, and some of them are literally defenseless. We have a pre-K site with three and four-year-olds on it. Those kids aren't fast enough to run from a bad guy. They're not strong enough to fight a bad guy. They can't get away. They're sitting ducks, literally. And I think this is a need. I, I appreciate you entertaining it even. And it, it's something we need to do to help prevent anything that catastrophic happening in Talawka, so.
So these positions will be created from here on out, not just this fiscal year, is that right?
I would ask that. That's why I put the next fiscal year salaries in there. Um, obviously, uh, I mean, that would, that would be very helpful, yes, if we, if we planned on it in the next budget. Now, as far as saving money enough ahead of time to help pay for that, I haven't been able to do that. Once again, the school, at least in principle, is willing to continue to split that cost in next fiscal year's budget. So that will put our cost at about seventy thousand dollars for next fiscal year. We have excess police cars right now that we were just about to surplus anyway. We can put these officers in, which will help, help reduce that cost, both on us and on the school system for the time being, so.
I think it was just after a year, uh, I'm sorry, a year after I'd taken, uh, taken off back in two thousand and twelve or so that we added a third, I guess, SRO.
We added a fourth SRO at Heritage Elementary, um, largely due to the, the travel time issue to get to South Ridge during business hours, during lunchtime, during peak rush hour. It, it takes lights and sirens. Don't help you. There are too many cars. When every lane's packed as full as it can be packed, you don't have to go, so.
Well, the request was, uh, made to me then, and I was supportive of that. And, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and commit here publicly tonight, Superintendent, the crowd, and I'll, I'll put the budget into my, uh, proposal, oh, excuse me, money into my budget proposal that you all will see in May and June, until, well, I guess, May, um, and we'll have that there. There'll be a few of them to prove that, of course, but I'll, I'll find a way to fit in.
This will put one at each, okay?
This will put one at each side, yes. Um, well, um, proposal, um, basically, the bottom or the third proposal would probably be the toughest as far as placing one at every site all the time. Proposal two does. And even if I had, um, I sat down and talked with it with Superintendent Presley today, and there, there may be about an hour at one school site where the SRO wouldn't be there because of the part-time hours. But we can easily cover that with our, with our normal shift guys, to spend an hour at Sequoia Elementary to make sure officers are there through when they get out. For an hour, we can do that for sure, so.
Um, Chief King, at the bottom of, it's our page eighty-seven, your proposal page, and you mentioned the cost of this year's addition can be covered by budget savings within the police department. Do you know approximately what your budget savings for this year are currently?
Um, we're trying, we're, been working with finance to try to reconcile that a little bit because of some of the different places money went. We've paid out some salary to an officer who left. I know, in principle, I've had basically a patrolman slot open almost the entire year, a different patrolman slot from here to there, but we've paid out at least a couple hundred hours' worth of leave time to him when he left, which is going to be done some salary. I would be very comfortable saying that we're eighteen to twenty thousand dollars ahead in salary, um, in our salary budget, even with the payouts. I would be comfortable saying that, but we're still working on reconciling that.
Well, then, there's another question, too, is that, um, you, I mean, I need to be careful because we've maybe covered that, we probably would be able to put these people into place tomorrow, even if this were, I mean, you have.
It, it would probably take a couple of weeks, depending on how many full-time, just to get approved, uh, or police pension physical. It will take a couple of weeks to get them scheduled. Now, the part-time that we're prepared to recommend today, he could go to work tomorrow.
Right.
Easily. Um, we've also had one of our full-time patrolmen already within the department show interest in sliding into the cops in schools portion if it's approved. So that's really a second one that we could put to work. She's on days off right, on Thursday, in the schools. So then we'd be one short for two to three weeks until physical's done and that, and that returns, but.
Think that's a little faster.
Go ahead, Counselor Long.
Um, Chief King, this is worded as we have the option, obviously, of hiring any worker, one to three, full-time people. And you've given us the scenarios on page eighty-seven in your pocket. What is your preference? What is your recommendation? What would you like to see?
Um, I think proposal two, or the two full-time, one part-time, I think is the most optimal, um, proposal. All the way around, as far as covering schools and as far as covering the city during off-school time, that part-time officer is someone that we can use for biking trails, for Norris Park, um, for the skate park, uh, for twenty-four hours a week. And a lot easier than, um, a full-time position. Full-time positions in schools, school resource officers do not take much time off during school. They're like teachers. They are there every day because if they're not, somebody else has to cover their duties, and we just don't have that. And so they build up that vacation time. So basically, when school's out, they take vacation. Many of them do. This part-time position would not have that luxury because they don't have vacation time. They'd have to come back to the street when school is back. That proposal two with a part-time gives us some flexibility to put that person on evenings, on nights, um, on day shift, at a bike trail, um, at the skate park, walking downtown during Christmas season, to help patrol local shops, local businesses, um, to give some added security. It's one of the jobs I had to do when I was a dare officer back when I was a rookie. It was Christmas break. I got to walk downtown. Got to know shop owners very well, and, but my recommendation would be proposal two, if I, if it was my choice.
I will say, I see Officer Jordan almost every day at the point of three, and he does an amazing job.
He is irreplaceable. He and Officer Stangland have both been with the school resource officer program basically since it started, haven't you, Randy?
I've, I've been here for this much, ten school years.
Ten school years, and I think it's Brian Dela, so they've been here ten, eleven years in our school. And they literally, they are part of the school. That, that's the, one of the greatest benefits. And in the presentation, it talks about it, is having those officers in the school to build relationships with kids, to become someone they look up to, they respect, they trust, and someone that is there to protect them all the time, so.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention and for working it out with Superintendent Presley.
I can, I, I just say, I think it's great, um, you know, and I could go with your recommendation of, uh, full-time, two full-time and one part-time. And I would be just fine with three full-time and the students as well. And I can say, you mentioned two, but I can say Officer Robertson, I mean, he's there every day at Heritage.
Before him was Officer Tanner, and, I mean, yes, it's, the school resource officers offer such a benefit that really, on paper, you never see, because it doesn't show up in stats. It's something you really can't put pen to paper, too, on the difference they're making. Um, just the peace of mind even in staff that has a school resource officer there, so.
Can I go to make one mention, too, that is one thing that has been known after me is that we, officers on the street would be responding to incidents at, particularly at Junior High School. I don't think the pre-K center probably had very many calls, but at the Junior High School, they would otherwise be pulled off the street to go respond to those incidents that required their attention. With the SRO there, we're actually also putting more people back on the street, leaving them there, excuse me.
In a sense, yes, um, you know, actually, and you know, Officer Jordan is responsible for three schools right now. He has Cherokee, Greenwood, and Sequoia that he has to be at anytime they need him. And he's never where he's needed when they holler at him on the radio. He gets one place and they start yelling at him from the other. We have an SRO at the middle school presently, which is Officer Stangle. We have one at the high school, which is Officer Phelps. This would add a second officer that would more than likely be on the high school side, but would be able to float to that middle school if Officer Stangle had to be gone. We have three within a quarter mile of each other that can respond, and then we put someone full-time in Sequoia, in Greenwood, and in Cherokee.
And those aren't prob, you know, necessarily problematic schools, but nonetheless.
The younger your age group gets in kids, the less police work, pull-up, police work that we do. But it's also, um, the easier targets if someone comes in to do either.
Sure. And I think it's very, I think it's really important, you know, that we have that presence. Because I think, you know, let's not get into a lot of what's happening in the country now, but I think the SRO program is an under-talked-about and, but a blessing to the schools.
It is. And SROs are a lot like a SWAT team or an emergency operations plan. Because when you need an emergency operations plan, you can't write one. When you need a SWAT team, it's too late. When you need an SRO, it's too late because the damage is already done. You have to be proactive on this instead of reactive, and so.
I mean, because.
That's why I'm here.
Mr. Bush, you know, was a teacher, but I was, you know, I was a student in Fort Gibson when that happened. But it just dropped kids off at the middle school and was coming around the corner, so.
It changes you forever. It does.
Counselors, what is, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve with the Chief's recommendation, two full, one part-time.
Motion in a second from Counselors Bliss and Hires. Clerk, did you get that? Any other comments or questions, Chief? This is a roll call, please.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very glad I remembered that we'd already had, like, your motion, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Very much. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks.
You know, this community is blessed in a lot of ways, and I don't think the Talawka community realizes how blessed we are to have the number of SROs that we have. I, I meet superintendents across the state all the time that have none, zero. So, um, I, I, we appreciate the collaboration that we have with the city of Talawka. Just want you to know that, and I want us to realize how blessed we are to have them, so, thank you.
And we can do the fun part. Ms. Petty, we'll go to item number fourteen, which is discussion of possible action. Hire one to three, we'll.
It's been working it kind of weird this time just because we didn't know how it would play out. And so I'm going to read those names for the two at the same time. Well, actually, I'm going to do them separate because they're different grades. Okay, so I'm going to do them both. Um, we would like to recommend to hire Kyle Reed as a patrolman one in the police department and Robert Bacon as a patrolman three. Bacon, sorry, I was like, made jokes about it. I forgot. Yes, Robert Bacon. Bacon is a, yes, uh, patrolman three.
Counselors, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Someone.
Second.
Motion in second from Counselors Hires and Long. Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number fifteen is discussion of possible action to hire one to two part-time school resource officers in the police department. Ms. Petty.
And it's our recommendation to hire William Jacob Robertson as a part-time school resource officer in the police department at seventeen dollars an hour, if we discuss that.
Is there a motion, Counselors?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in second from Counselors Combs and Long. Roll call, please.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number sixteen is discussion of possible action to hire an operator in the street department. We'll take it forward. Ms. Petty.
It is our recommendation to hire Jesse O'Kelly as a operator in the street department at a T-112 step one.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Start with me. Long and Hires, you're ready, clerk. Make a roll call.
O'Kelly.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Charlie Wood Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item numbers, uh, oh, you're in our fill-up. Uh, number seventeen. Discussion of possible action to adjust the stepping grade matrix to the incumbent clerk. From T-112 to a T-114. Ms. Petty, I believe we do, decided to not take any action on that at this time, and so we would ask that we just not do anything here. Uh, we'll bring that item back whenever, uh, the time comes that we may be ready to take action there. And so, the co-injection, we'll move to item eighteen. Seeing none, that is discussion of possible action to amend section six of two, promotion of the employee handbook of personal policies. Ms. Petty.
Um, yes, as you can see there, it's just removing that last sentence in that first paragraph, um, to take out the six-month period for a promotion. And we've had several issues come up since I've been here where we want to promote within, even though it hasn't been six months and it's been kind of an issue. We kind of always work around it, but at this point, we would like to change it. Um, a good example for you guys would be if we hire somebody in the solid waste department that has a CDL, but an operator is open, and then a driving spot comes available, and it's a, we have to hire somebody else even this person we've already had for four months to be promoted, and so that's our reasoning. And I did look up, um, I had four other cities, um, handbooks, just wrote emails, and out of those, three didn't have anything in there that said they had their waste six months, so. Just to make sure it wasn't a crazy thing that we were asking.
Which four communities, which four communities were you using for comparison? Were they part of our universe that we used for our salary survey?
They were ones that I had used for something else, um, uh, so the policies that we'd taken last time to make changes on annual, and so it was, I believe it was Miami, East Anne Spring, maybe Grove and Elton City. Which I'm not a hundred percent positive on these losses, but just because there was a P that I was trying to find.
I like the six months being in there because it'll make efficiency. So if they ever need to fall back, which the next period, program down, if they don't, if they fail to meet the standards in six months, then they're returned to their previous job classification. And if they're transferred, we don't like that. Uh, with the introductory period is six months, I mean, it seems to be a thing there, so. I prefer to build that institutional knowledge in that individual as opposed to.
Sure, it just, it just.
Promote people every month.
It's hard when you have somebody that's qualified and that's able and, and, we're a small organization, so we have a spot come up. We don't have spots come up very often, so if they don't promote them, they're probably never going to promote, and it's just hard to tell someone, yeah, you're qualified and you're able and, and you're doing a great job and we want to promote you, instead of going out and trying to find somebody. Or maybe we can't find somebody on the outside, and we ran into that, too. We have a couple of pros and cons with either. We've just found that the pros would outweigh the cons in this case of taking it out.
By doing away with the language that they can't promote within the six months, that doesn't do away with the six-month probation period.
No.
So even if during the six month, so if they were hired on at one position and promoted, you know, at month four, they're still on a probation period with the city.
Yes.
To be able to leave, and so I don't know that they.
And we, we still have the transfer policy in place, so you still can't transfer departments within six months. So we're just looking at interdepartmental. So we're not saying you could come on, you know, as something in solid waste and then just move over to police in four months. You know, so you're still going to have the same supervisor, the same, um, does that make sense?
Months, we probably clarified that.
Well, there's a transfer policy right below the promotion policy.
I understand that, but it.
And it, it's still in place. We haven't changed that. So all we're doing is changing the promotion interdepartmentally, because it still says you can't move departments for six months in the next policy down, so.
And it doesn't include new hires?
I'm sorry, what?
Right, the promotion does not include new hires that are within their probationary period or introductory period, whatever it refers to in the policy.
I don't know. I don't, I'm not.
Isn't that what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to adjust, right, by this? Yeah. I think we're trying to address it to where.
It would only affect new employees.
Only new employees, really. So the first six months, they would then move, they could be promoted, but we haven't gotten rid of the probationary period. So if Stephen Wright's modernization of the alcohol laws makes somebody fall off the wagon or whatever in six months, we still.
Yeah, it's not going to change their probation period. It's just changing them being able to promote within six months. The supervisor still has a right to not promote them within six months. I'm not saying they can't, I mean, just saying that it gives us the option to promote within rather than having to go outside and have a capable individual.
So then how many times can we promote an individual within the fiscal year? As we have to allocate these salaries at the beginning of the year if we're going to be handing out promotions down.
Well, it's not.
I'm not saying that's going to happen, but, but.
We're going to have to hire somebody at that salary, though.
You've got to understand, we've, we've got a hundred and sixty employees that read this thing. They're a lot smarter than any of us, the legislature.
Some of those are addressed by contract, and then other, and we have that many, some are part-time, some are, so they're going to be hired on full-time.
We promote from part-time within six months.
I've never really liked that.
I mean, but if you hire a part-time employee and they're doing a great job, and it's hard to find these positions sometimes, you're going to hire somebody that you know can do it even if they've only been there four months. So we do that all the time. So we do that all the time.
I can't even make sense, because, I mean, essentially what, say they come into the solid waste as like a collector.
Right.
And then in four months, a driver position opens up, and they have a CDL. I mean, it only would make sense that we'd look to our current staff to then promote within, and then, you know, advertise for that collector position.
Right.
So I don't know that you hamstring them just because they took a job with the city four months before another position came open.
This is another one of those policies that makes us tie our hands and reduce our flexibility that serves no greater purpose.
Well, what ends up happening is that it, it decreases efficiency because we wait. A lot of times, these department heads say, no, they're not going to find a great candidate, or they really like this one, and they know they're doing a great job, so we wait three months before we put it on, and we just aren't efficient for three months. Unfortunately, that happens.
And I think the other end of that is, it still has to come back to account, I mean, we still have to prove the promotion.
Correct.
And so it's not that we're going to hire them in as something and slip it under the radar, that we're going to promote it to something else. I mean, it still comes back to...
Commissioner, do you have any issues? I mean, do you have anything you want to say, unless it's a department head that has a lot of hires?
Yes.
That was my next question.
Ms. Petty has a very good point, and, you know, all the time, we get people in that have a lot of certifications, that they'll have a CDL. And, uh, the best example was what she gave at the solid waste. But even in my department, you know, get them, if, if another position opens up and they're still in their probationary period, even though they, they would be the very best one to put in that position, they're still in that probation, their first six months that can be promoted. And I, I don't see any reason whatsoever why we should keep the thing that says they can't be promoted within the first six months.
Well, so...
Kind of my train of thought that I've always been raised on is that you don't modify your policies to accommodate one person as you kind of, you know, work with it. And so would it not, this, my question is to Grant, is, could we not, since, if Jessica wants to do this with an employee, and she is the HR director, determines that this person is the best person for the position in conjunction with the department manager, and she's going to have to bring that to us to vote to promote that person to the new position, could we not just grant, um, exceptions to our policy as those arise, since they're not something that is super common legally? Would that not also be an option?
Yeah, you could bring up social exceptions.
You could just say, I'm going to make a special exception to promote...
I think that's a worse practice than that.
Well, and we, and we talked about doing that, to be honest. And it's like, how many times have we been in this situation where we're waiting, or we're doing this and that, and we just felt like it didn't serve its purpose in there, and it really ties our hands.
But you still have to wait to come to counsel before they actually get promoted.
Right, but, but also, you've got to keep in mind the comments made, and again, this is more policy legal, I think, but comments made that people would just not post a job opening because they know that six months is due, they might not want to raise that special exception for you, versus, it's not as big of an ask if you're just saying, this is the first time I'd like to hire because they're multiple. So, in a vacuum, I don't see that there's any problem believing that's, that line. Again, I've read all the policy, I know how it plays back into this specific section, but in that one section, there is no big problem with believing that line, which is allowing promotion in that six-month period of time.
Well, what is our retention rate, and how many exit interviews are because they didn't get promoted? I mean, is this, do we have documented proof that this is that big a problem that we have to change it?
Do we have documented, we have documented proof that it is a problem, that it remains, so I...
Do we have exit interviews?
You know we don't.
Why, why, why are you leaving?
No.
I, I know why we fire people, but why are you resigning? Why are you quitting? Why are you...
No, you know we don't. No, we don't.
Unfortunately, sometimes they don't resign, and they just get stuck with somebody else being put as a driver, and they have to stay as a collector, and just hope that another position opens up, and they're not in a place where they can just leave. Sometimes they might leave. I mean, I'm just saying, I've seen department heads come to me on several occasions and sit down and say, I want to do this, but we can't promote within six months, or we're going to wait around and just for four months so we can promote them. I mean, I've seen it happen.
And I think what we're saying is bring to her next time, or bring counsel next time a special exception if this is, if you voted approved, but...
Sure.
But we're just taking a step out there, and we're going to prove it anyway. Or, I mean, it's going to come back for us anyway, so.
Right.
I'll, I'll make most of that, we go ahead and prove this.
Second, motion and second for approval of the amended section. Any questions or comments? Roll call please, Clerk.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, item number 19 is discussion impossible action to transfer, or excuse me, to accept the transfer of Heather Torrento. I'm sorry? From a cashier to the purchasing agent in the managerial department. Uh, again, Ms. Petty, I think that it's been determined that we might want to wait on this particular item, and so, again, unless there's an objection, we will take no action here as well. And then we move on to item number 20. I don't see any objection. Number 20, discussion impossible action to approve the purchase of asphalt from Arcola Sand and Gravel, empty now, $23,500 to be used on North Bluff Avenue, free for us.
Good evening. Chances are good that we will not have to spend this money, but I am going to ask you to approve the purchase of it in case we do need to. On the north end of Bluff Avenue, we have about 700 feet of street that has no asphalt. It's ready to lay, but Ross Construction Company is going to start construction within the next few days. We met with them last week, talked to Brayden, his superintendent, asked them if they would consider starting on the north end, and as part of their contract, go ahead and put the pavement down on the north end, which would keep us from having to do it, so... Thought it would be a good idea to get this to you, get it approved just in case, on the off chance that we do have to go ahead and pave that, because I, I can't afford to keep it closed very much longer. And the reason that there is no pavement on it from Shawnee all the way down to Downey is because TPWA on, in one lane, they dug it out to install the water line, in the other lane, they dug it out to install a new water line. By the time they got these two ditches dug, one in each lane, it pretty much destroyed all the asphalt from curb to curb. So my guys went up, cleaned it out, repaired roadbed, compacted the ditches, got it ready for pavement. Uh, originally, TPWA was going to supply the money to buy the asphalt, and then they turned up, they didn't have a nickel in the account to do it, so it falls right in my lap. But they had, uh, helped me, we talked to, uh, the construction company, and it looks like they'll go ahead and start on the north end, put the pavement down, keep busting mannequins standing. That's a long story, just to ask you to approve the $23,500, just in case we need it.
Second. Motion and second by Counselor Combs, Counselor Long. Any other questions or comments?
Really, it's third.
Today.
They said, they said next Monday.
No.
And then they're in violation of contract. The fifth was the start date.
They thought that they were going to, I don't know, they were going to do some preparation work, maybe put out signs.
All they got to do is park a big yellow piece of equipment there, and they were on site and they started, but I'm just saying, they had a, that don't let them...
I talked back to you. I talked to the superintendent, and I asked him, I said, when can you do it? And he said, well, that they're...
Let's look into that. They have an obligation, start today. They can't travel back in time.
Sooner or later, we can get them one, but after...
Well, I'm about fed up with these people. And if they can't start on the contract date, then I need to make a phone call. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
No, I didn't see, I'm losing track of everything tonight. Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Let me know about what you find out.
I will.
And I don't want that part to slide. Item number 21 is discussion impossible action on implementing a media relations policy. Ms. Murphy.
Yes, um, if you'll look at pages 91 through 94, it's in your book. Uh, basically, the goal is to better inform the public of the happenings of its city government by representing and presenting valuable and accurate information correctly in a timely manner. Um, it is my impression that, I think this has been brought up before, and, um, my position is new, and you haven't implemented something like this yet. Um, the policy discusses how to handle media inquiries, who should speak on behalf of the city, and then it also talks about what you can and cannot release in regards to personnel and lawsuits and such. Um, it also discusses, um, personal points of view and initiated communications contact with media outlets. It's pretty basic. Um, I pulled some information from the city of Tulsa. I, um, also worked in a media outlet for 10 years, Talalua Daily Press before that. Um, so I'm pretty versed in it. Um, that's basically it, and you have the policy in your book if you want to. I'll take any questions.
Just to clarify, Grant, can we take action on this since it's not listed as sponsored by a department head or a county attorney?
I, I wasn't wanting to sponsor that, and I did ask Jamie to present it, I just didn't have my name down there as the sponsor.
Yeah, I, I do want to add, um, the goal is to create a central contact for media outlets. Um, as department heads, yourselves included, you get busy, and it's hard sometimes to facilitate that. So we have one place for a media outlet to go to, and for me to help you facilitate that information, it would help you out, I think, and maybe get the information out there correctly and quicker, or at least as soon as the information is spread.
Um, I have several questions. I know everybody put your shop face on, um, on comments throughout all four pages, so we just want to talk about that section by section, or what is our...
There were yours, oh, yeah.
Okay. Purpose section, last sentence, page one, technically page 91, "All efforts will be made to comply with the Open Records and Freedom of Information Act." Is that the correct language? All efforts, don't we say that we're going to, have to say that we aren't going to comply with the law, not that we're just going to try really hard?
You going to just that?
I don't know if that's a question.
It goes without saying, I mean, efforts are, attempts to comply with the, comply with the...
Okay.
So, yeah, we can take, we can take out that sentence if you really want to.
You're the attorney, I'm just, that was just a question I had that I wanted to ask tonight.
We're okay with that language, and we can go out.
Okay, and in the top, uh, page 92, we say, last sentence, let's see, "To facilitate this objective, the city public relations specialist is principally responsible for coordinating the media, the city media relations, common with the exception of most public safety issues." Um, I know in most instances, we have Chief King, Chief Hammons, um, Mr. Hunter Wood, who deal with those issues, and so do we need to better define that? Because I'm pretty sure you probably don't want to take that 2:00 AM call when the building's on fire, and they want to know why it's on fire, and, or why he was killed in a car wreck, or whatever it might be, so I assume those are...
I do have a city paper, so I will take that call if necessary. But, um, we considered adding language, but we thought we'd present it as is, and then if you had questions or amendments that you want to make to the policy, I think, I'm secure. So if you would, if you'd like to see something of that nature, yeah, I'm, or whatever you think is necessary.
I know Chief King is here, and I'm sure he probably has called me in here in a minute, but I'll go ahead and finish my little scribble notes, and then let whoever else wants to talk next, can talk next. Uh, section C on that same page, 92, um, let's see, "In order to expedite consistently high-quality and accurate information going to the media, public relations will work as a spokesperson to speak on all topics regarding to the city of Talalua," which, once again, I was concerned about the after-hours and police fire and emergency management. Um, again, on scene two, I also made a note, it says, "In addition to public relations specialists, the mayor, city administrator, all elected officials, and city attorney can speak on behalf of the city while keeping the public relations specialist aware of statements," uh, blah, 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 blah. Um, because, of course, Chief King is an elected official, so I assume he would follow with us, but of course, Chief Hammons is not an elected official, so I didn't need to, need to know if we needed to better clarify that for Chief Hammons, so that we were not tying his hands and impeding his ability to perform his, his duty as fire chief. Um, and then on page 93, I just had a question to Grant, that, that top sentence, "Document shall be forwarded to the city clerk via a freedom of information," as we play, "Freedom of information request." Is it freedom of information, or is it open records, or is it blow?
It's open records.
It's open records, so we need to correct that?
I actually thought that whole D1, that whole paragraph was pretty confusing, pretty reserved.
D1?
Yeah, starting on the bottom of 92 through that place that you...
The state law levels of the records, I'm sure you can probably find a way to pull it up.
And then, uh, page 93, number two, I guess that's D2, uh, "To read it in context, immediate inquiries regarding tuning or potential litigation should, should be referred to the city's legal representative, city administrator, or public relations specialist." Period. Immediate inquiries regarding personnel matters should be referred to the public relations specialist, human resource director, or city administrator. It is the city's policy that it cannot comment on pending litigation and pending personnel matters. But technically, wouldn't the only people who would have the right to even discuss HR matters would be the HR director, city administrator, and mayor? Would the public relations specialist not even be allowed to be knowledgeable of HR issues?
I think my comment can always be the last sentence of that draft, but I can't, which is like why we've put it in there.
Okay.
To make sure that people are aware.
Yeah, you might want to bold and underline that, too.
Exclamation points, lines.
It's the most important thing in the whole policy.
Um, let's see, E2, last sentence, where does it start? "If an employee addresses a public meeting, participates in a radio talk show, is interviewed by a current publication and television program, the same language must also be stated or written unless the employee has received prior approval to serve as an official representative of the city." So my question was, this paragraph to me did not clarify who grants that approval of the language, and, um, I personally would like to see that improved upon or better clarified.
So prior approval by, including individuals for that?
Yes, I don't know, Grant, you're, once again, you're the attorney, I am not.
That's a good idea.
That's also in 104, general information of our personnel employee handbook.
So we would also...
Public relations, news releases, door security, political activity.
So we would also need to modify section 104 of the handbook, the board, this could be modified, correct? Counselor Bliss?
I just want to make sure all jobs with, with the other, we're not getting too conflicting. You know, here's this one, and here's this one, and about both, but it may not, so what? If I may ask one question, what is media?
I would consider media, any news station, newspaper, anything that puts out information to the public.
So is that blog? Is that Facebook? Is that, I mean, uh, I think we need to define what media is in this thing.
We can.
If it is just newspapers and...
Newspapers, radio stations, TV stations, um, any print-based, TV-based, but we can define that, if you'd like to see that.
I think we need to be fine. I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the intention of this is not necessarily to say that only the HR specialist can now talk to the city. I mean, basically, what this policy is doing is putting in place a procedure for media to reach out to the city. to reach out to the city. So, if that fire is happening at 2:00 in the morning, and they don't have Chief Hammond's number, they have, they know, the media knows who they can call, which would be Jamie in this case, and then Jamie can connect that media person to Chief Hammond to make the request, or, you know, to Chief King. And I think it just, it helps kind of level the playing field on who's calling who, and how everything should be addressed. And so, I don't think, you know, that it necessarily has to spell out, it doesn't have to spell out some of the things that, I think it does a good job of generally covering how you get from point A to point B in a media, in the media request, and then getting to those people. And I think part of Jamie, the HR specialist's job would be to say, okay, this needs to be...
Are you meaning PR?
Yeah.
I was getting, I was getting all confused.
I was trying not to say Jamie every time, but the PR, I think part of what that job is, is to say, okay, this question can be addressed by this individual, and this question can be addressed by this person, not necessarily to always be, you know, Jamie's not going to be the new Sarah Huckabee Sanders giving a press every day. She's going to be helping facilitating how...
I never want to, I don't necessarily, I don't want to speak for Chief, or anyone else that might be dealing with some of the suggestions I've already brought up. I just want to help facilitate good information out in a timely manner, and help. I never want to have a news station not get an answer, or a newspaper have to print, the city didn't comply in a timely manner by the time of publication. I like the idea that, and I think it's beneficial to the city and our services, that there be an extra place that people can go to in that area of expertise, and I can help get them to the direction that they need to go.
I don't want to censor anyone, or make them uncomfortable to voice their opinion for fear of reprimand.
I don't either.
If you don't state, or divulge that it's not an official view of the city, I mean, I would, I would assume that if it doesn't come from the governing body or one of the higher echelons, that, you know, would be an opinion and not an official view.
You would hope that, people would view it that way, but perception is everything. And if you're an employee of the city, and you by chance have an opinion that maybe evolves poorly, it's important to note that that is your personal opinion, and maybe not one that the city stands behind, or endorses, I guess.
But it even, it even works with us. I mean, individually, as council members, it's our opinion, it's not the city of Talawa. Now, if the paper were to ask me a question, I can give the paper my opinion, but that's not the city of Talawa's opinion, because I don't have that, you know, until we vote on something, or, you know, collectively, a majority of us say, yes, this is how it is, it's not the city of Talawa's opinion, if you will. But, you know, that gets miskind of interpreted all the time, just we saw it tonight, you know? There was a meeting with the mayor, and that became the city's opinion, you know, and that's not how that should play out, and I think that's what this policy is sort of addressing.
And I don't think we're going to be able to defeat every situation.
Sure.
But you don't have a policy, and if we can get one that everybody can stand behind and agree to, that hits every area that you think is necessary for the city of Talawa, then I think that's what we can do. And this is just a starting point, because you don't have one, and you probably should. Well, I mean...
There's a lot of it is covered in here, and it's not as in-depth as this one is, but...
Do you like the adjustments?
I think the high points are there, and no, no reprimand, you know, employees don't have to fear reprimand for, as it's written in this, and here we outline that, yeah, we're going to, you're subject to be written up if you don't approve this disclaimer.
That's also the, isn't that only, if they identify themselves as a city employee in that same post, or that same letter, or what have you? So, if they just say, "I'm Josh Bliss, don't identify yourself as what you are," then you're fine.
I say we repeal the entire policy procedures handbook, because I don't want to fear it being, you know, reprimanded, I mean, that'd be...
I'm just saying, the way it's worded, I do believe it says only if you identify yourself as, well, I work in the streets department, so it's...
Doesn't seem to talk about... Or doesn't define a given employee, so...
So, the elected official is cut out, then?
Yeah, basically, but I'm not worried about making it. I'm making the motion that we adopt the policy, do your amendments that you need, and then, you know, if you need to bring it back to us, for our okay, we can do that, too.
Motion, Councilor Combs, for adoption, is there a second?
I'll second that.
No cross-reference whatsoever with what we got, making sure that this is good.
Yeah, my comment would be...
Well, I mean, hold on, okay. Hang on, yeah, I've got another comment. Hold on, please, everybody, for this one. Okay, a second. Chief, I know you're eager to make a couple of comments, could you come do that really quick?
Sure.
Just whenever you have the floor.
Address me just a little aside, start to get attention.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I didn't see the motion coming, I would have stood up sooner, I apologize for that. I would request from the council, from the mayor, from this governing body, that the police department be exempted from this policy. We have, this will be the next batch of policies, you see, a media relations policy that will be in our new manual, and just ask that we be exempted from this policy. That's all that I ask, we have that media relations policy that will be in place, that covers a lot of confidential information, the touchy-feely information that we're trying to prevent from going out. On another note, unlike several departments in the city, I feel like I have a little more leeway being elected by the people to represent that police department, I would just ask for that leeway as an elected official to be able to speak on behalf of my department, to represent my department, as I see fit.
I think, though, with this policy, Chief, you're cut out. I mean, you would be...
Just at the very, I'm an authorized spokesperson, but I'm not cut out at the end of, as far as requiring approval for media releases and things of that nature. I'm an authorized spokesperson, but it still doesn't exempt me from being approved by people who really don't have much knowledge of law enforcement, ins and outs, the ins and outs of law enforcement itself. So, once again, media, we have a media relations policy, I would ask that we be exempt, is my request tonight, if this is approved, amendment to the motion, so to speak.
About emergency management and fire department.
That was exactly where I was going. I was going to strongly request that Councilor Combs and Councilor Hires consider rescinding their motion, so that we can give Ms. Murphy the opportunity to clean this up, and remove the police department from this, and also have an opportunity for Chief Hammond and Mr. Underwood to give their input insights, since they're not here tonight, so that we could do it all in one correct motion, and we would be looking at a correct final document, and we bless it, and that everybody's happy with the final product.
Please, Councilor I, I ask you to amend the motion to, we can add language, to exempt the police department, and I've had conversations with Jamie and her, she went, but I think Chief Hammond, I can't speak to Mr. Underwood, but they're relatively, oh...
Sorry.
Yeah, oh, violation.
Yep, sorry.
They're fairly satisfied, right?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Mr. Underwood and Chief Hammond.
We presented this during a department head meeting, and requested comment, and so I would, I would assume, I believe Chief Hammond's had a couple of similar things that the chief had also. And, like I said, we considered adding that language, but I want you guys to just have it as it was, and if you'd like to add it, that's your decision. And Nate and I work together, we've got an understanding that he's going to try to keep it included, and so I can help the citizens, the residents, put out that information in a timely manner, so I'd be happy with however you want to do it.
Well, just, Councilor Combs, if you'd like to add language, to exempt all three emergency departments.
Yeah, we can do that.
Councilor Hires, you feel okay with that in your second?
The only, the only hesitancy I have is, we don't have anything that says, um, Chief King has told me that he will keep me in the loop, so I can make sure that I don't get a phone call from a news agency that I don't know any information about the situation. So, there's nothing that says that they have to do that, but, I mean, I can do it with those other emergency personnel and make sure that that's something that they'll be interested in working with me with.
I mean, I guess I just don't, in reading it, I don't see where it excludes, I mean, looking at Chief King, I mean, specifically, let's talk about Chief King, because he's here, I'm not talking about the people, I mean, like, he's an elected official, so it would exclude him, and so it allows him to be able to speak, and then, it facilitates these objectives, "The city public relations specialist is principally responsible for coordinating the city media relations, with the exception of most public safety issues", which I would argue, not argue, I would say probably is 99% of everything that the police officers do, maybe when you're doing the blood drive with the, you know, the...
But even, it's not saying most of the issues within the police department that are, it's saying most public safety issues, so it's, what defines that? Where does that stop most? Is that vague term of, when do we want to pick a time and say, "Chief King, you screwed up, because you shouldn't have released this, this is not a time where you're approved to release that information."
You're in a pretty neat position that we can't really touch one way or the other?
Right. So, but I thought I'd say that properly, and not throw that, I've seen chiefs throw that up at Councilor Mayor, and I don't agree with that, I didn't want to use that as my defense or any issues.
I mean, I guess my only hesitancy, and it's not that I just am like over here, and I don't want to give Chief King free rein to, you know, put whatever press release he wants out. My own hesitancy is that I believe that this is putting a policy in place, not necessarily to say, not to hamstring city workers, but to give media and outlets that want to cover the city, and want to, and want to talk about things the city is doing, the outlet to say, so this is who you go to. We have a public relation, or, yeah, public relations specialist.
So, we don't need a policy for that, Councilor.
No.
We don't pass a policy for outside entities to follow, we pass a policy for city employees to follow.
Right, but...
And so, a policy is not needed for Channel 6 on who they call. Channel 6 is going to call me whether we have a policy in place or not.
Maybe.
They do.
If they have their cell phone, I mean, Channel 6 maybe is different, but, you know, Channel, you know, 8 might not, maybe got a new reporter, and they don't have Chief King's cellphone, but they go to the media relations, they go to the media relations policy, and they say, hey, this is the person I'm supposed to call, and they call that person, and then that person says, "Call Chief King." So, I guess that's where I'm at, is I just don't want to, I see kind of the linear line that we're drawing, where this is the person, and this is how it all gets farmed out, and I just don't want to have a lot of caveats in that, but then I also, I mean, agree that, you know, you've got the policy in place, and you all are doing a good job of...
It's not fully in place yet.
It will be.
It's not in place yet. It will be as soon as the council approves, surely, but it's not in place currently.
I mean, that's my only, so I think that's my objection, or my only issue that I'm working through here, is, you know, that reporter from whatever channel it's calling, they don't have, they're new, they don't have your cellphone number, they don't know who to call, so they turn to the policy.
We've had several discussions about that, and I think you know...
The last two media incidents that I've had, Jamie and I, we have a very good agreement in place now, is let her know, send that media release to her so that if somebody does call her, that she has some answers for them, and that's, that's great for me, because the fatality accident, there were literally about two hours during that time span where it was almost impossible for me to answer from. I was sitting, family notifying, giving death notification, I wasn't going to answer my cellphone when I was there. If I had sent Jamie that media release ahead of time, she would have been able to help bridge that gap while I was out of pocket.
Which is, I think, what we're doing moving forward, and we both agree to that, that I just want to be a help...
Yes.
To an already functioning well department. No intentions of taking over anything that Chief King does, Mr. Hammond's emergency management, I don't, I don't have an interest in doing that.
And I guess, I mean, and I've worked within an organization, and we have a policy like this, you know?
Yes, a very strict policy.
At the, where, you know, I work for the Cherokee Nation, and at the Cherokee Nation, they call, and they have a question about, you know, our loan fund, they, you know, I don't answer that question directly to the reporter, I, somebody from the communications department comes to me, the, the, I don't, the expert in the, in the field, and asks what's going on, and gathers all of the information, and then they in turn go back and report, so...
And I'm coming from 10 years at the Cherokee Nation, having that policy as a reporter, not as a public relations individual, or specialist, or communications rep, so I was the reporter, having to go to those civic individuals, and it definitely helps facilitate it as a reporter. It could be frustrating at times, because you do have those looks that you have to go through, but I think it does aid in getting out the information correctly and timely.
Councilor Combs, I think that your original notion probably is, in the second, probably work, and we can bring that amendment language back, that provides exemption once that policy's being put into place with the PD, so...
And you have my email, if you'd like to send me specifics, I wrote down notes.
That's always the difficult part, we turn these things into working meetings, where people are picking up comma slices, and we end up taking paralysis by analysis, and it's just crazy, so...
I want to adjust it a bit, don't you guys would like to see?
Just to be clear, I don't think that he seconded the amendment, though.
Well, I was going to ask you, should we remain with the original, and then we'll bring that back in a couple of weeks, when Chief's putting this in place to add that amendment, so move forward with your original notion.
And with the exception of...
If you want to keep that, I'm happy with that, too.
Yeah, go ahead and do that, because we're putting the policy in place.
Are you okay with that? With your second?
So, are we, is, so, is the motion to amend for just the police department?
Yeah, the motion is to approve the policy, to exclude the police department.
As drafted, and bring the senator, because I think she has some valid...
We have a valid motion, a second on the floor, and I thought...
Well, I need to clarify, so not yet.
But I have written down a list to amend and exclude or exempt the police department, fire department, emergency management, that's the last...
Well, that was something that I had suggested, but it didn't get included in Councilor Combs' motion.
I agree with that.
Did you come back? No, everybody's checking ahead of me, you can tell I'm struggling tonight with clarity due to clarity, or actually, probably more bedroom drillish, but...
I don't, I, I would exclude the police department based on the policy, based on them, how do I say it, based upon the police department passing their own policy, which is what Chief King says, I guess, within the thing, but I think that with the other two departments, I mean, while I understand, but I think they're directly in the hierarchy of the city, I mean, they're not led by an elected official, it makes a difference, so...
So, let me, or, would you prefer to revert to exclusion only of the PD?
Sure.
In that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, Councilor Hires, are you okay with the exclusion only of the PD?
Yes.
Okay, so we now have a motion in second, Councilor...
Comment, okay. I still strongly, strongly, strongly would ask my fellow councilors that we tailor, take no action, and wait till we can actually incorporate the revisions that we're suggesting, and actually look at a finalized document. That would be what I would implore you to consider tonight, and then that would also give Chief King the opportunity, if he would like to bring those, his policy revision to the midnight meeting in two weeks, where we could also look at that and approve those at the same time, and then also, I believe, Councilor Bliss referenced policy 104 of the HR handbook, which would also need to be modified to accommodate this change. And I think whether or not we approve this tonight with these modifications, or whether we wait two weeks from tonight and do it on the, what is that, the 19th, or something like that, yeah, the 19th, I think two weeks isn't going to be that significant of a time to wait, and I would really, really, really love to look at the actual, complete, perfect document, and I don't know if I said this or not, because I'm kind of rambling, and we've been here for three hours, and this is kind of for Grant, I've always been taught definitions, avoid, deposition, and so, I just like, that's why I like definitions, because I think it's every day clarifying things upfront, because here, the people who are in this room are agreeing kind of on what we, how we interpret this, that three years from now, or a year from now, it could be different people sitting up here at the horseshoe, it could be different people sitting back here at this table, and so, that's where the confusion, I think, changes, and that's where I would just like to see that cleaned up, and it's absolutely no offense to you, I would just prefer that. So, once again, for the third time, I will implore Councilor Combs and Councilor Hires to consider waiting so we can read this next...
I would implore these things that you clearly noticed before the meeting to be sent to the people who are writing policies, so that we can get a draft in front of you and meet those requirements. that meets those criteria. I would implore to take action and...
Clark, you have a comment? There was some committee at one point that I tried to create.
Clark, will you give us a roll call, please?
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?
No.
Counselor Long?
No.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor?
Item number 22 is a proposed executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
That's me.
Is there a second? Is there a second to go into the executive session? Second. Roll call.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Most of theirs.
Jump right back into our regular session, item number 24.
What happened? Where'd he go?
We'll do that now, but Counselor Hires is returned. Item number 24, discussion of possible action regarding property located at Lot 5 and Lot 39, the original town site of the City of Talaquaw, State of Oklahoma. Counselors, what's your pleasure on this item?
And Mayor, I would like to make a motion, granting the city attorney to initiate a lawsuit against Springwater Properties LLC and all other necessary parties to fight title and/or determine all parties' rights to Lot 5, Lot 39, original town site of the City of Talaquaw, State of Oklahoma.
We have a motion, is there a second? Second, Counselor Combs. Clerk, will you give us a roll call, please?
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Abstained.
Counselor Bliss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 25 is discussion of possible action on the purchase of real properties located on Park Street. I think it's technically an avenue, but we'll go with it and we'll have that correct connection of it. Do you all want to take any action on this at all? Hearing no desire to take action from the council, we will move to item number 26, which is discussion on the midnight special meeting. Couple of councils have already indicated they will not be here in what would be our normal routine, which is the 19th of this month. We wouldn't have a quorum if that were the case. We'd have to hold a special meeting at a different time, or we could hold off until April. I don't know what day that'd be, December, something like that. Is there a second? Second? Okay, sorry. My name started with a S, my name.
Do you want to wait and see what items pop up that we need to do at midnight? And if we need to have a meeting, we can do it.
That's, yeah, we can do it that way. And if we can wait till after spring break and have it a week, you know, with the one week gap, if we need to, or something.
That's right, spring break.
That's what's taking everybody in town.
Spring break.
Well, we're just not set to meet, and we will then call you, though, if something should drop up that would require your attention. So to item number seven, 27, excuse me, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Excluded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Bliss?